Okay, welcome to the November 13th, 2014 Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. Vice Mayor Doug Young has our prayer and our pledge.
Please join me as I pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you have given us. And this week, we honor our veterans. We thank you for the veterans that have sacrificed, the ultimate sacrifice, that gave a blank check to this country to be filled in at a later time. Thank you for the families of our servicemen and women all over the world. We thank you for our local heroes, our police, our fire, our EMS. Be with them at all times and protect them as you have protected us. We thank you in your Father's name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to welcome everyone here tonight and have a few special guests we wanted to recognize. We have two members from Youth Leadership Rutherford who are here tonight. We have Joshua Shepard and Takesha Terakai. Did I say that right? If y'all stand up, I apologize if I... We thank you guys for going through the Leadership, the Youth Leadership Rutherford Program and learning a little more about our county. So, thank y'all for being here. Then, we also have several members of Leadership Rutherford who are here tonight that they're over here in the corner, if y'all don't mind standing up. Thank you guys for going through the program as well. And we know that you'll stay for the entire meeting since we've already signed your forms, right? All right. Most everyone up here, I think, has gone through the program as well. Also, we have newly elected Councilman Bill Shacklet, who I think we're eagerly awaiting him joining us and waiting for the election to be certified, which I think is November the 17th. And then, Councilman Shacklet will be joining us. So, thank you for being here tonight also. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that you have any questions about on the consent agenda? Ms. Gels Harris?
Yes, Mayor, I would like us to pull off item number 1A for discussion, please.
Okay. Is it okay if we move that to... Are you wanting item 1A or 1B?
I'm sorry, 1B.
If we can move that off and put that on the end of the agenda, that'd be great. Under other business. And then, Ms. McGannon, on item 1A, when were you asking for that to be effective?
Suggested that that be effective January 1st of next year so that it would not affect this year.
Okay. All right. Anybody got... Any other questions?
Here are no other comments. I move for passage as presented with the exception of item B.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading, ordinance 14OZ46, amending a PRD along Middle Tennessee Boulevard at Vine Street.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14OZ47 to amend a PRD south of Salem Highway and west of Casey Lane.
Move for passage.
Second.
Councilman LaLance and Councilman Young. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14OZ48 to amend a PUD located along Fortress Boulevard at Pocket Creek Crossing.
Move for passage on third and final reading. Second.
All right, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14O50, repealing the current version of Chapter 21, Article 5 of the Murfreesboro City Code in its entirety, and adopting Chapter 21, Article 5 regarding noise control.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Move into second readings and consider for passage on second reading ordinance 14O54, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 25, Schools.
Move for passage.
Second.
Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
First readings, consider for adoption Resolution 14R27 regarding Federal Transit Administration procurement procedures.
Mayor, if I can speak to that, we have two items that should really be taken in tandem. One is a resolution specifically approving for use with city procurements using Federal Transit Administration funding their procurement guidelines, and those guidelines are attached to a copy of the resolution. Then, we are amending our procurement code to specifically reflect that we will be using the procurement guidelines we have approved by resolution. This was requested by the Federal Transit Administration folks and has been reviewed by Mr. Richardson and is recommended to you.
Okay, you have this resolution for you or before you?
Move for passage.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 14O55, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Section 210, Procurement Code regarding procurements utilizing Federal Transit Administration funding.
Move for passage.
Second.
Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll move to new business and consider for approval or renewal of certificate of compliance for Charles E. Farrell and Ronald Philip Petit, Murfreesboro City Limits Liquor and Wine, 5353 Northwest Broad Street.
Mayor, this is a two-year requirement for all stores that have a liquor license in Murfreesboro. This is a current location that have met our background requirements, and I recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll conduct a public hearing and approve a certificate of compliance for LP Patel and Arena Patel at Beer and Liquor Depot, 2002 East Main Street.
Mayor, this location has been a liquor store in the past. Currently, it is a convenience store that wishes to take advantage of the new law where they can sell more than liquor and add liquor to their location. These are new owners for this location, and they have met our background requirements. You would need to conduct a public hearing first and then consider it for approval.
Okay. We have several public hearings tonight, so before we open this first one, we want to give you the rules for our public hearing. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. We ask that you speak no more than three minutes unless you're a spokesperson for a group. Please address all comments at the City Council, and at the end of the hearing, we'll attempt to address all comments. Each person will be allowed to speak only once. So, with that, we'll open the public hearing on this certificate of compliance. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And you have this certificate of compliance before you.
Move for approval.
Second.
And motion to second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Item 10A, pursuant to Resolution 14OAR51 adopted by the City Council on October 16th, 2014, will conduct a public hearing to consider annexing approximately 114.17 acres along Blackman Road and consider a proposed plan of services for the same. Mr. Donald McDonald, applicant 2014-505, notice of said public hearing was published in the October 27th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our first public hearing is coming to you from the Planning Commission this evening is for you to consider a petition for annexation made by Mr. Donald McDonald. His request for annexation is for property that he does own, and the property is identified in purple on the map before you. This property is located south of State Route 840 and along Blackman Road. You can see that the property is located on both the east and west side of Blackman Road. The area east of Blackman Road includes a tract of approximately 103.29 acres, and that is located north of the Berkshire subdivision. There are seven parcels located west of Blackman Road, located north of the Lyle-McDonald Court, which are currently undeveloped and equal about 6.52 acres. And there's the location of the Old Homestead subdivision located north of the Lyle-McDonald Road. The Lyle-McDonald Road was formerly known as Vaughn Road. All these lots are owned by the applicant, and included with your materials is a petition to annex the property. There's also a plan of services which outlines the services the city can provide and provides a timeframe for when they can be provided. You can see from the study area that there are portions of right-of-way included in the study. The portion of Blackman Road which fronts the property has been included in the study area, as well as, which totals about 3.92 acres. And a portion of the Lyle-McDonald Road, which is about .44 acres, has been included in the study as well. The property is in the city of Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary. It is contiguous with the city limits on two sides, along its southern boundary and its eastern boundary. It appears the city will be able to provide services to the area upon annexation becoming effective and development being extended to this property. I have included in your materials a plan of services that outlines the services that we can provide. This property is in a part of the Blackman Community Land Use Plan, and has been anticipated for quite some time that at some point in the future, the city would annex this property. Mr. Donald McDonald's in the audience this evening, and so is his representative, Mr. Clyde Roundtree. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your decision regarding this annexation request. This first public hearing will be for you to consider the annexation of these properties. It's not to consider the zoning change request. The zoning change will be a part of the next, will be the subject of the next public hearing. However, this public hearing should be to consider the annexation. If you have any questions from staff or from the property owners, we'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Okay, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, we'll open the public hearing and consider annexing approximately 114.17 acres along Blackman Road. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 14OAR51, to annex an area located along Blackman Road and adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage on first reading.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. Smotherman, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Pursuant to Resolution 14OZR52 adopted by the City Council on October 16th, 2014, conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately 21.59 acres along Blackman Road as commercial fringe district, and approximately 88.22 acres as highway commercial district, simultaneous with annexation. Mr. Donald McDonald, applicant 2014-422, notice of said public hearing was published in the October 27th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is the public hearing that I mentioned in my previous presentation, and it's for a zoning change request, which is a companion to the annexation request for which you just considered. Before you, you have property owned by Mr. Donald McDonald that's located along Blackman Road, south of State Route 840. The property is shown in two colors, is shown in the orange and in the purple on the map that's before you. And you can see that this property is, these properties have two separate zoning change requests. The areas that are shaded orange, he's requesting that you consider zoning to CH, and CH is Commercial Highway District. The area that's shaded purple and adjacent to the single-family subdivisions, he's requesting to be zoned CF, and that's Fringe Commercial District. The CF District doesn't allow as many uses as the CH District would, and it has a few design standards that require extra sensitivity for when it's located in areas near single-family homes or multifamily homes, as a matter of fact. The area shaded purple is 21.59 acres, and the area shaded orange is 88.22 acres and includes all the area that was just studied for annexation. The properties located along the western side of Blackman Road are all being requested to be zoned CH, and that's Commercial Highway District. I did mention that the property is located north of Berkshire subdivision, and Berkshire has several different single-family zones on the property. It's also located adjacent to a developing single-family subdivision, which the lots haven't quite been developed yet, but it is under development, and we have approved master plan, and those properties are zoned RS12. Properties to the north and to the west are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and are zoned R15 in Rutherford County. This property is located in the Blackman Community Land Use Plan, which the city prepared several years ago. And if you look at that plan, I can bring that up on the screen for you. You can see that this area depicts the property to be used for mixed use in office distribution, including retail, office, civic or institutional uses, and high-density residential uses that accommodate regional employment opportunities. It was expected that these areas would be developed with rather intense land uses that would have a regional draw. The current, the current zones that have been requested are not inconsistent with the Blackman Land Use Plan. And when originally contemplated, the types of zones that may fit this area were CH, CF, LI, RM16, and various forms of the planned development zones, as authorized by Section 13. It is noteworthy that at the time the Blackman Land Use Plan was adopted, the Berkshire subdivision was in its very early stages of development, and there were no homes or streets in that subdivision at the time the plan was adopted. So, our community looked just a little different. The applicants did reach out to the Berkshire subdivision and hosted a neighborhood meeting on September 16th at the Blackman Community Center. We have in our audience Clyde Roundtree and Mr. Donald McDonald, who are representing the property. I'm going to invite Mr. Roundtree to the lectern to go through the request. Mr., the owner, Mr. McDonald, has not indicated that he has anybody who's ready to move forward with the development plan, but does want to change the zoning entitlement to be more consistent with the Blackman Land Use Plan. And at this time, I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Roundtree to lectern. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. It was the recommendation of Planning Commission that all six members present that evening that this zoning change request be approved.
Thank you, Ms. Green. My name is Clyde Roundtree. I'm with Hudson Steel Engineering. And I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present to you, Commissioners and Mayor. As Margaret Ann had mentioned, Mr. McDonald's owned this property for over 30 years. He has, he's been exposed to the planning process with 840 cutting through his property as well as Veterans Parkway, so he respects the planning process. And in the process, he's done three things that are significant. First, he researched the property and understood that it does have significance for the Blackman Land Use Plan, and he wanted to stay consistent with the zoning that was, that was recommended within the plan. Secondly, he reached out to our planning staff at Hudson Steel. He reached out to the city staff and worked in good conjunction with both groups to find out the best suitable use for the property, the best suitable zoning, and try to maximize the opportunity for the property, but also be sensitive to both the Blackman Meadows neighborhood as well as the Berkshire neighborhood. And as Margaret Ann mentioned, he, he created the commercial fringe zoning as a result of trying to create a buffer between the commercial highway zoning and allow the residences that board of the property to be, to minimize the impact on those residences. And with that also, there's a, there's a natural buffer that he wanted to extend the actual setback lines for the building setback, extended that to 80 feet, as far as that's documented in the plan, in the pattern book, as well as increasing the landscape buffer to 30 feet in order to preserve the existing vegetation that's in place. He's also incorporated several restrictive covenants in terms of building height, in terms of where loading docks will be located on the buildings in the commercial fringe, and various other elements to make sure to minimize the impact on the surrounding neighborhood. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions for Mr. Roundtree?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Roundtree, what's the normal buffer from this zone to the next?
The landscape would be 15 feet, so he's doubled that.
He's doubled that. And what about the, the buffer?
Setback?
The setback, I'm sorry.
The setback we're requesting is, proposing is 80 feet, and I believe it's 50 feet naturally.
So, he's enlarged the setback and the buffer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
Thanks.
All right, we'll now open the public hearing to consider this zoning request.
I live at 1517 John Lee Lane, which is a part of the Blackman Meadows subdivision. Today, I have brought with me just a few points that I'd like for you to consider. I've also brought some maps with me that I'd like for you to see. I live, like I said, Blackman Meadows subdivision. We are off of Manson Pike. There are actually three other, three neighborhoods total within our area. We have the Oakton subdivision, the Princeton Oaks, and Blackman Meadows. And our property backs up to what he was talking about, the commercial fringe area would be. So, some of my points that I'd like for you to consider is eventually, Blackman Meadows is still being developed, and eventually, we will connect with that Clover Hill Drive. That would be, John Lee Lane would connect with that road. It would actually dead-end kind of right before you get to the airstrip, as it is now. My concern, biggest concern, would be that whatever would come in would potentially want to connect that road, whether that be for to use as a delivery route or just to use as an access point. There's not many ways to get from Brinkley to Blackman Road, and so I could see where somebody could think that that would be a great option. But, since this is residential, of course, I would propose that that could be stated somewhere, that we could not do that because we have several small families, children, you know, it's a community, it's a, it's a neighborhood. So, we would not want any through traffic, anybody trying to cut through, you know, speed or anything like that. My second concern is that there actually isn't a plan in place. If you flip to this map here, you'll see that there are several proposed property plans that have been approved, and they all had a plan with them. So, I guess some of my concern is, you know, this one doesn't quite have the plan with it, the master plan. And so, it's just pretty much, yes, a lot could go back there. And so, I think, especially our neighborhood, we would be concerned for that. Blackman Meadows, we actually weren't notified of this. I don't think we were in the area to get any notices. And I found out about this not too long ago, and it's something that I think would greatly impact us. It's right behind us. Of course, we don't want anything that would be a nuisance to our community. You know, we picked this area, we actually just purchased our home in February of this year, so we picked this area to be out kind of on the outskirts and to, to kind of be out there in that nice community area, and so if something big comes in and takes that away, that's, it's going to be hard for us. Another thing I'd like to point out is that Mr. McDonald also has 79 acres that have perfect access to Veterans Parkway across the street. I know that's not a part of any of this, but Blackman Road currently is not, it cannot handle the traffic that would bring in commercial, neither can our road in our neighborhood. So, for me, that's just something to think about as far as the commercial zoning and where we have access already. I know you'd have to expand Blackman Road to get that. So, thank you.
We'll get, see if we can get some of these questions answered.
Hi, my name is Sarah Zwerko. I actually live as her neighbor. I'm a 1526 John Lee Lane, also a part of Blackman Meadows subdivision. I know I spoke at the last meeting as well. I recognize that this land has been intended for commercial use and likely will be zoned commercial. I have some very similar concerns, especially with the road that would pass through Clover Hill. It would go from Brinkley potentially all the way out to Manson, and what that would do for the three, actually, I think it's four communities there, that it could impact all residential, most of them with small children, obviously, we have one, and what that increased flow of traffic, whether it be, as she said, trucks or just vehicular traffic trying to get to that commercial area would be. So, that would be definitely one concern, what is going to happen with that road and how it will impact these neighborhoods. My other concern is what sort of commercial use will be in there. From looking at the list, you know, even commercial fringe, fringe still has like 100 different categories that are acceptable, and the CH has like 150, if I counted correctly, categories that are acceptable, anywhere from, you know, get our 24-hour Walmart with a pawn store and a liquor store, which is not necessarily what we're thinking of in our neighborhood versus, you know, it could be a school, a park, an office building, you know, those sort of things that you see that, okay, you think, all right, maybe a little easier on residential community, something that's not 24 hours, something that's not open until 1:00 or 2:00 AM, that may not have the light, noise, pollution, whatever it might be. So, they're just things that are unresolved, and we would, we'd love to see the plan or maybe some assurances to what would and would not be acceptable to go in there. I don't know if there's any way to limit what commercial uses there are. I know on Blackman Road, there is commercial property right now that is owned daycare specifically. I've seen other commercial properties that are spown commercial retail, so I don't know if there is a way to narrow that scope of what commercial opportunities would be available for that property to reassure the residences around it of what could be in our future. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 14OZ52, to zone an area along Blackman Road as commercial fringe district and highway commercial CH district simultaneous with annexation. Yeah, Ms. Ray Lauter, Ms. Green, we've got some questions that if you, I guess if there's some of those that we make it go through and address some of those for the homeowners.
Sure. I think I heard several questions, and one was regarding any potential cut-through traffic or street connections that would be made. And there, I did mention there was a master plan or have been master plans approved for the adjacent single-family subdivisions. And with those master plans, staff recommended, Planning Commission approved connections between the subdivisions. As you know, we call it a good planning practice to have connectivity through subdivisions. It's good for service delivery, whether that is a fire truck or solid waste, and it's good for the residents who drive through the property. The streets that are designed in residential subdivisions are designed a little differently than commercial. We have a street specification book that designs, that specifies the criteria. Commercial streets, of course, would be larger and would, would have a different design than the residential streets. So, regardless of what happens on this property, there will be connectivity through the subdivision, through the Clover Hill Drive, and we've seen, we actually have street stubs expecting that. Now, I don't think that practically speaking, if, if this were to develop as the Blackman Now, I don't think that, practically speaking, if this were to develop as the Blackman Land Use Plan has planned for a regional draw, you wouldn't, there wouldn't be any reason delivery trucks who would want to service a large commercial employment opportunity would drive through these neighborhoods, it would slow them down, it wouldn't, we make sure that those paths aren't direct, so it's not a straight line, so it's not an easy thing, it's something where you have to stop several times or make turns. So practically speaking, that is something that doesn't generally happen. You would see them come from the major criterials, so they would come from 840, and they would travel along the larger roads. We do know that Blackman Road would require any improvement. So if this property were rezoned to allow commercial uses, when they submit plans for that, which would come when a user is identified, we would require them to dedicate right-of-way, either improve the roads or pay to improve the road, to increase it, there may be turn lanes. I suspect if this were developed with a regional employment opportunity, or an office distribution area, or mixed-use area, which mixed-use wouldn't be allowed under this, but we certainly would require turn lanes into the site. And that would be off of Blackman Road. We wouldn't expect them to come through the neighborhoods. I think part of Mrs. Knox's concern is that there isn't a plan, and for zoning entitlement, generally, for bulk zones, there isn't a plan, and that's something that would come later. There are criteria, and that's what's in our zoning ordinance, and our street specs, and our subdivision regulations, that talk about the design of plans, and how they can look, and how they can function, and how it can impact neighbors, and how drainage can be designed to. But there's no specific plan yet, and that's not unusual at this stage. There have, there are instances where there are plan developments, where there's more of a formulated plan, but even in that case, it's oftentimes not to the level of site plan like we would normally see at planning commission. So, no, there's no plan at this time for bulk zonings, we generally would not see that. And Mr. McDonald has indicated he does not have anybody in mind at this time. What we do have is the Blackman Land Use Plan, which has identified this area to develop with that office distribution area. And so there was quite a bit of community outreach for that Blackman Land Use Plan, although it has been 14 years since it's been adopted, but...
When was that Blackman Land Use Plan? Has it been updated since then?
Since 2000.
Okay.
2000, just, the year 2000, sorry, just wanted to say 2000. The commercial highway and commercial fringe districts are similar. There are some differences. The commercial fringe district wouldn't allow uses like a hotel or motel, wouldn't allow automotive repair or automotive sales, but they do allow commercial uses. So the commercial fringe district, where would allow a gas station, has some design requirements to say that the pumps have to be so many feet, it's either 200, 250 feet from the property line, whereas the commercial highway zone doesn't have that requirement. So that's kind of the difference between the CF and the CH district. There really isn't any other commercial zone to choose from. Commercial fringe is what was created to sort of be not as intense as the CH zone. Mr. McDonald has asked to put that along his perimeter, thinking that that would serve as a buffer, and Clyde Roundtree mentioned a buffer that they're committing to, and he mentioned program book, but of course, there's no program book for this property because it's a bulk zone. But they, I think, were wanting to, on their own, add some additional restrictions that would increase the buffer width. And that would be a restrictive covenant, and of course, we understand how restrictive covenants work, but that's what he was referring to. I'm not sure that he clarified that very well. As far as the notices, just go, you know, we did put it in the paper, put signs on the property, and we know that sometimes people don't always see that, but I'm glad that Mrs. Knox and Mrs. Sarah, I didn't hear your last name, were able to find out about our meeting tonight. Was there something else that was asked that maybe I missed, or that...
I think you've got why it's not a plan development, and then, I guess, is there any, no, I think you've got, warehousing, CH zoning allows warehousing, which was involved trailer truck traffic, so I think you've got that as well.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When I read the minutes for the planning commission meeting, it says the commercial fringe zone would include restrictive covenants. What does that mean?
The commercial fringe zone would not include restrictive covenants. The restrictive covenants would be applied to the property, but the owner's own volition. So the owner is saying to you, this is something I want to add to my property, just to show you that this is what I really mean to do. The CF zone can, will not and cannot enforce those. The CF zone would require a buffer, which would be a 15-foot landscape buffer along the RS15, RS12 zone districts, but...
Yeah. How wide is that about the, the, the commercial fringe piece of this? About how wide is that, as you go back, kind of, I guess that's east to west? Is it 250 feet or something?
I've got a very terrible illustration that I can put on the screen for you, but it's 250 feet along the eastern property line. I've got it pulled up, if you want to see that now.
Yeah, so, so basically, what's, what's happened is, he has put in place an 80-foot setback away from the neighborhoods, put in a 30-foot...
Landscape.
Landscape boundary, and put in a 200, as part of that, a 250-foot buffer, whatever you want to call it, by using commercial fringe, instead of putting it all into commercial highway to try to mitigate the impact, is essentially what's happened, right?
That's what he's doing.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Green, one real quick question. Currently on this property, there appears to be a airplane landing strip or takeoff. Would the revised zoning allow for that strip to continue?
The strip is currently in use. It was in use before the city, before we would be annexing it. It would be able to continue their operation until it is no longer considered a lawfully established non-conforming use, and we have some state laws that regulate lawfully established non-conforming uses. He would be able to continue until he meets threshold where he stopped using it for so many years, and then he wouldn't be allowed to do it anymore. But that applies to all uses that are annexed into the city. If they were allowed before, they are continued to be allowed.
And if this property were to change hands, then it would no longer be usable for that purpose?
The use goes with the property, not with the property owner. So it's obviously being used that way.
Yeah, okay.
So one other question I got, I'm sorry, just to make sure. As it sits right now, I know it's in the county, so it's not a, you're not, you know, maybe should answer this or whatever, but yeah, I think you could. As it sits right now, by zoning it the way we're talking about zoning it, are we opening it up to a lot of new stuff, or really, that stuff is already capable of being there without this zoning? Is that right? I mean...
I think by annexing it, they can have access to city sewer. And sewer, practically, not having sewer can limit, whereas the zoning may allow it, not having sewer means you can't do a lot of things. So the annexation would allow sewer to be served by the city of Mercury's Borough, and then the zoning change would allow different types of uses, although I would argue that our review standard and our standards are fairly high, and probably what you would get developed in the city tends to be a higher quality development than maybe you might get in the county.
And what I find interesting is that 14 years ago, when we did the Blackman Land Use Study, we designated this as commercial mixed use, and the different zonings that he's basically asking for tonight.
We did, and we recognized that 840 was very close to the property as well.
And it was considered an employment destination or center at the time. I think that's, I don't know if that's the exact terminology we use, but, so, so we got it right 14 years ago.
I think Councilman Young has a good point about the Blackman Land Use Study. The one thing, as we're looking at our 2035 plan, you know, I think it may be time, a lot has changed in that area in 14 years. You've got Veterans Parkway that's now there, you've got an interchange, a new interchange that's there. I think it may be a good time that we would look at either updating that plan, or looking at what opportunities we may have to study the area as a whole now, to say what has changed since we looked at that plan in 2000. Just something maybe to consider.
Yeah, how does that dovetail into the new comprehensive plan that we're in the process of doing now?
I know it'll make too many comments, but being a 32-year employee with Milton S. Electric, Lord knows, I remember what all of that looked like out there. I've been one of the engineers that power took Clover Hill Drive, when I was a state engineer. And I don't want the public to think that we're insensitive, that the city's not, they're insensitive to the needs and concerns of many citizens when growth impacts them. But this process has been coming for 25 years, and sometimes, growth has grown pains. But in my tenure, usually, it's not, it's not, nowhere near far at a bad impact than what some people think in the end. But that area's going to develop. We wouldn't have Veterans Parkway going to 840 if 840 wasn't there. It's a trickle-down effect. So I was on the planning commission for nine years. So I've heard it, I know their concerns, but I can assure you that whatever the city allows will not impact you as bad as you think. And connectivity, being a utility person, is extremely important. I understand how people don't want other folks driving through their developments. I understand that. But those are public roads, and we have to look out for public safety. That's why I've always endorsed connectivity. And by the way, Blackman Road would not look the same probably 10 years from now. It'll look entirely different. If Donald decides to sell. Just to make that.
Okay, you have this zoning ordinance in front of you. We did.
No more comments, I'll move for passage.
Second.
Mr. LaLance, Vice Mayor Young, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gilz Harris.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 14OZR53 adopted by the City Council on October 16, 2014, conduct a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to approximately 2.08 acres in the planned commercial development, PCD district, and the planned residential development, PRD district, located along Middle Tennessee Boulevard and East Main Street. Mr. John Neville, applicant 2014-425B, notice of said public hearing was published in the October 27, 2014 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you. Our third and final public hearing from the planning commission this evening is for you to consider a PCD and PRD amendment, and I know looking at this probably gives you a little bit of deja vu, because I believe the last public time I was here bringing some public hearings to you, there was a request to amend the PRD portion of this plan, which is known as the East Main Village. You can see the property is shaded in two different colors for which the change is requested. This area that's blue is currently zoned PCD, and so this request will be to amend that PCD portion. And the area shaded orange is currently zoned PRD, that's Planned Residential District, and this request is to also amend the PRD portion. The difference between PCD and PRD is the C and the R, and C stands for commercial, and R for residential, so planned commercial district and planned residential district. So currently, this property is, the commercial portion is developed, the residential portion is undeveloped, although there's some utilities that have been extended within this area. The PCD commercial area currently has the Boulevard Restaurant, and then the adjacent commercial uses along that restaurant. I think we're somewhat familiar with that. Behind the restaurant and the accessory commercial uses is the parking lot, so the parking lot's in the center of the property. And then the orange area, if you were to drive out there today, and I think I have some photographs of that, is currently just a grass area. However, the plan will be to allow some condominium form of ownership, townhomes, and that's what you reviewed last month. They wanted to make some architectural changes to those townhomes, and that was approved. Currently, it's grass, and if you visit the site, you'll oftentimes see that there are vehicles parked upon this grass because there is a need for additional parking in the area. This application is for you to consider amending the restriction on the amount of floor area that can be devoted to a restaurant within a commercial area. So the Boulevard currently, and I think Jimmy John's, maxes out the amount of restaurants that can be in this commercial center. And why that's important is because commercial, or restaurants, are one of our uses that require the most parking. For example, an office would require one parking space for every 300 square feet of floor area. A restaurant would require one parking space for every 100 square feet of floor area. So it would be three times as much as an office or retail building would require. And the reason is, is because, of course, there are more people that visit the restaurants needing more vehicles. So their request is to allow the entire commercial, the strip center to be utilized as a restaurant, knowing that they will still need to meet their parking standard. So to meet our parking standard, they would like to build parking spaces where the proposed residential condos are located. So if you went out there now, you might see vehicles parking on the grass. Well, that area, they want to turn into a parking lot. The parking on the grass is not a permitted use, and planning staff have reached out to the applicant, Mr. John Neville, to inform him that that's not something that's not allowed, and any, if it's his employees or anybody who works in the center, that he should cease that, and he should do what he can to stop that. So what they would like to do is to construct a parking lot to make more parking, to allow more of the building to be used for restaurant space. They'd also like to maintain the ability to return the area that will be turned into parking to residential uses in the future, only if additional parking can be acquired. So we know that that would mean that there would be, need to be additional land acquired to build additional parking. So they don't want their entitlement for the residential dwellings to go away with this. They want to keep that entitlement, but have it linked to the requirement that they would have to find parking in the future. I'm going to invite Mr. Matt Taylor, who's representing the applicant, and I think he can explain his client's intent a little bit further. If you have questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them. The planning commission did study this matter, and they did, are recommending to you that you approve it unanimously. Their vote was unanimous to recommend to you that you approve it. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Ms. Green. Ms. Green did a pretty good job describing what our request is. Specifically, Mr. Neville, the owner of the Boulevard, would like to expand into what was, used to be the Sprint phone space. They see a need in our community for some meeting room space, so they'd like to convert that into a separate room, not just expand in their restaurant, so they can have some small business meetings, some lunch and learns, some education-type things in there while serving them out of their current restaurant facility. So if you have any questions for myself or the owner, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Best I remember, you're actually going to gain some parking spaces out of this.
Yes, sir. It was 11 or 12 spaces we're going to gain.
Because I probably thought from the rest.
I may have been guilty a time or two.
Good problem to have that. Okay, any questions for Mr. Taylor?
All right. So now we'll open the public hearing on this PRD amendment. PCD amendment, I should say. All right. So now, one, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 14OZ53, amending the conditions applicable to the planned commercial development, PCD district, and planned residential development, PRD district, located along Middle Tennessee Boulevard and East Main Street.
So move. Seven.
We have a motion in second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gilz Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the principal planner to schedule public hearings to consider rezoning RM16 along Merchant Walk, rezoning 728 West Thompson Lane, PRD, rezoning 315 West Main Street, CBD, annexation zoning along Wright Court, CH, GDO1, simultaneous with annexation, zoning ordinance amendments regarding parking requirements for commercial centers, and zoning ordinance amendments regarding uses permitted, lot and yard requirements, and land intensity ratios.
Ms. Green.
Good evening, Mayor. The planning commission held public hearings on the evening of November 5, and that is on four items of zoning change requests, one annexation, and two zoning ordinance amendments, which you read. After the public hearings, the planning commission discussed the matters and took action to recommend their approval. Staff recommends that you schedule a public hearing to consider these items as well.
Ms. McGinnis.
Mayor, I would suggest December 11.
Move, we set public hearings December 11. Well, maybe we should check our calendars.
Okay, we have a motion for December the 11th.
Say.
Have a second.
Don't wait, don't need to wait. Ron. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gilz Harris.
Aye. Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman. Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Okay. We'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission in regards to use of vinyl in the gateway design overlay districts.
Members of the council. During its regular council meeting on September 18 of 2014, Mayor McFarland brought up for discussion the matter of the use of vinyl as an exterior material in the GDO districts, and specifically how it was used in the Henley Station multifamily development located along Robert Rose Drive north of Medical Center Parkway. After discussion by the council, Vice Mayor Young suggested that the measure should be referred to the Planning Commission, and the council concurred. On October 15, the Planning Commission considered a report on the use of vinyl in the gateway districts. I copied that report, it was included, attached with this letter. The report indicates, includes the text of the GDO Design Overlay District Regulations as they existed at the time the Henley Station development was approved in 2012, as well as the text as it was amended in early 2014 and which currently exists. The report includes minutes from the Planning Commission and city council meetings during which the Henley Station development was considered, and recent photographs of the project. I will note that those photographs are becoming dated as that project continues and is continuing to construct. During the Planning Commission meeting, there was considerable discussion of the matter including the following considerations. One, a development should be considered in the context of how it will appear when it is completed and not just during construction. The Henley Station development was very much desired at the time it was being considered, and there was considerable sympathy for the cost savings that the vinyl allowed. No variance was required for the use of vinyl in the Henley Station development because there was no clear or specific exclusion in the GDO regulations at that time for its use. The zoning ordinance has since been amended so that GDO regulations now prohibit use of vinyl unless it is specifically allowed as part of a planned development authorized under Section 13 of the zoning ordinance, requiring public hearings and approval by both the Planning Commission and City Council. Future projects can be reviewed with the benefit of what has been learned from the Henley Station project. The recommendations. The Planning Commission did not have a motion, but it did offer concurrence, or consensus. It is the consensus of the Planning Commission members that no changes should be made to the Gateway Design Overlay District Regulations contained in the zoning ordinance at this time. It is the consensus of the members that the regulations should retain flexibility in order to allow the city to react to possible future opportunities in changing technologies. It is the consensus that the regulations, as they currently exist, for the use of vinyl in the GDO 1, 2, and 4 District requires a high degree of scrutiny, including public hearings by both the Planning Commission and City Council, and a deliberate and considered action to allow the use of vinyl. That is our report. If you have any questions, I will try to answer them. Mr. Young and Mr. Smotherman both participated in these discussions. They may be able to help if there are questions.
Mayor, there may be some appropriate uses about. Maybe appropriate in certain areas. I think we all learned something of this. We have two bodies, the Planning Commission and the City Council, that can review, add, or detract at any time, any items that would be affected by this. I think we chose not to completely ban it, simply because that there may be some consistent, there may be some times where it would be consistent with good building and good building practices.
Something that just struck me as we were reading through that, it said that at the time it was being considered, there was considerable sympathy for the cost savings that vinyl allowed. Who? Considerable sympathy from the council or from Planning Commission or whom? That was a few years ago, right?
Yes, sir. It was both the Planning Commission and council. That was, the cost saving was discussed. It was a, I think in some instances, a, maybe a deciding factor as to whether or not to allow it. That was a justification and a reason that the applicants offered throughout the discussion.
And at that time, there was very little construction being entertained in this community, and certainly it was a $60 million investment, I think is what it ultimately wound up being to this point. And I think that was probably where the sympathy concern came in, was, I think there was sympathy for all the people who were in the construction business at that time because of the impact of what the economy was doing to them. And if that same plan were to come forth today, I think it would be reviewed at this point differently. But I think that's where the concern came from.
Okay. Any questions?
And I guess just to clarify, any, if there is a variance, if someone is proposing the use of alternate materials, that does have to go through Planning Commission and also has to come to City Council?
Yes, sir. For the use of vinyl in the gateway design overlay districts in the GDO 1, 2, or 4, it requires to be zoned as a planned development. And that does require, not just before the Planning Commission and councils, but that's a public hearing. The public can participate in that discussion as well. There has been a complete exclusion for vinyl use in GDO 3. That's the land that the city formerly owned or currently owns around the hospital, around the Gateway Island, and that area. I wouldn't note this, and this may be something that is not included in the report, and it's just something as a by-the-way, as your planning director. The restrictions and covenants that the city has on its property do not exclude vinyl, although the city's zoning ordinance does exclude vinyl in GDO 3. So at some point, there may be an interest in part of the DRC, or the Gateway Commission, or the administration, or the council to do something in that regard. And that opportunity would exist to you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Okay. We'll consider recommendations of the city engineer with regards to repairs to recirculation line at Gateway Island.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and members of the City Council. Through the last couple of years, the concrete recirculation line that provides water to the upper lake from the lower lake at the Gateway Island has leaked at three known locations along its path due to a separation of its joints. The 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe extends from the lower lake to the wet well located at the pump house and is about 150 feet in length and is up to 22 feet in depth. We've included a site plan for your review. The water is then pumped up from the well to the upper lake and creates the streams and waterfalls enjoyed by many at the island. In a previous meeting, staff recommended repairing the line with Water and Sewer's annual rehabilitation contractor in situ form using a slip lining method that would be completed in place. Staff estimated the cost of the slip lining at $45,000, and we believe now that there will be some additional costs with site preparation in order to complete the work. However, after discussion with Water and Sewer personnel about the effectiveness of the slip lining on the size and the type of the pipe used at the lake, staff has decided to not move forward with the slip lining and has reviewed several options that's listed in your letter. Of the options listed, staff recommends replacing the concrete recirculation pipe with a 24-inch ductile iron pipe, which will extend from the lower pond to the wet well. The ductile iron pipe is traditionally used for pressure flows and will perform better over an extended period of time. The insulation will, could allow for the repair of any voids the leaking concrete pipe may have caused along the route. We may actually look at just filling the existing concrete pipe in place with a flowable fill, which would also be effective because, or eliminating any further leaking. All in all, staff believes the ductile iron pipe will perform considerably better than the previously proposed line concrete pipe. The last scheduled event at the island is in November, with the next event not scheduled until March of 2015. With council approval, work will begin before the end of the calendar year and will be completed before the March 2015 event. Staff recommends using the annual water and concrete contractor to complete the replacement. And based on the unit cost in that contract and additional information provided by the contractor, staff estimates the cost to replace the pipe and complete the associated repairs of the trail and the retaining wall is $75,000. The cost will also include draining the lake, which will be required prior to completing the work. We propose to share the cost with Water and Sewer Department at 50% each, with our portion of the funding coming from unforeseen contingencies. We recommend approval of replacing the concrete recirculation pipe using the ductile iron and using our annual stormwater contractor. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Griffith, I know hindsight vision's 2020, and oftentimes it's easy to second-guess, but we should have probably never used a concrete pipe in a pressurized situation like this, should we?
I would agree with that. Yes, sir.
Okay. And we think that this current proposal will solve all of the problems that we've had with the deterioration and erosion that's causing what we're referring to as dropouts or sinkholes.
It will certainly eliminate the ones, or we feel like it'll eliminate the ones that's associated with the recirculation pipe, which are the majority of the ones that we're facing now. Still a car stopography in that area, but happy to say that the fact that we're having to drain the pine now, it used to drain itself, so it's actually holding up very well with the repairs that the council has approved previously.
Question. Do we need a motion? We did. Rules are moved. Second. Mr. LaLance. Vice Mayor Young. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Fields-Harris.
Aye. Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Consider recommendations of the city attorney with regards to employee handbook amendments to Sections 1002 Vacation Leave, 1003 Sick Leave, 1008 Holidays, 1009 Overtime and Compensatory Time Non-Exempt Employees, 1010 Compensatory Time Exempt Employees to be repealed, 1037 Attendance and absenteeism, and 1041 Employee Time and Record Keeping.
Mayor, members of the council, what I would like to do is to try and go over for you the several employee handbook policy changes that your staff, the city manager, the HR director, assistant HR director, and I are recommending to you. And as to each, I want to sort of explain why we're doing, what we're doing, when we are recommending to you that it be done, and to try and answer questions that you may have about each of these. They are interrelated, and so I may jump back and forth a little bit, but I'm going to try to go in numerical order because that was the order of my cover memo and I feel might be easier to follow. As you know, the city has committed millions of dollars to modernizing our, and having an ERP system that will revolutionize what we're doing in finance, city court, and human resources. The Human Resource Information System, or HRIS, has a software vendor, Kronos, that we'll be using for timekeeping. Mr. Godwin, who will be helping me with this presentation and is here, has worked with them before, and he has told those of us who have not worked with it what significant difference it will make. One of the things that is necessary because of the substantial complexity of the program and all the things we want it to do is we have to build it based on the policies that the city will be using. There is a long lead time necessary between making these policy decisions as to how the system is to be built, installing it, training people on it, implementing to have it ready for the go-live date of October 1, 2015. So we are asking you to make and to carefully consider decisions now that will not have a direct impact on employees until the HRIS system is live on October 1 of next year. In order to aid you, sorry, in order for staff to develop these recommendations, there's been a comprehensive review of a considerable variety of current city policies and practices. In the course of that review, we've discovered some inconsistencies between different departments, between the policies as written and as they are being applied, and that we were not using best practices. And so we have used this occasion to review some of these recommendations to you are based on a change that we need to make for the programming of the HRIS system. Some are what we simply believe are better management practices and improvements. And so some of them, we are going to be recommending that can take effect sooner than October 1 of each year. My memo to you tried to identify the most significant changes, but the reason I gave you the existing policy as well as the proposed new policy was so that you yourselves could read both and see if there were other aspects that you had any questions about. So the first one is Section 1002 Vacation Leave. I want to make absolutely clear that there is no change in the amount of vacation leave that employees would get, the rate at which they would get it, which is based on years of service. And that's true for the other employee benefits, the sick leave and holiday pay. There isn't any reduction through these policy changes in that regard. We have not, because staff has been working hard, excuse me, to identify the issues, to consider what we thought was the best recommendation to make to you, and then to write them, we have not, because you haven't decided whether you want to accept those recommendations, we have not communicated all these issues to employees. We are going to be doing that, but as I go through the presentation, I will probably make a couple of remarks to allay concern because that something is changing, and the fact that there is no change in sicker vacation leave amounts is something I want to be clear. What we are proposing a change in is how that is to be accrued or earned and reflected on the records that employees get. Currently, vacation leave accrues at the end of a year of employment on the employee's anniversary date. So you would get it on your anniversary date if you've been here. It's subject to reduction if you've had considerable amounts of unpaid absence. The proposal would be to change that so that it's simply earned or accrued each hour that you are here working or taking paid leave. So during the course of the year, you would be earning it. If somebody left, you know, mid-year, they would know what amount of accrued vacation leave they had. We think it would be a positive thing for employees because they'll be able to know with each pay record that they get exactly what their leave balances are and how they relate to their attendance. So it's an important issue for programming for the long lead time I referenced. But this, because it would be reflective of the Kronos timekeeping, would be a change that would not take effect if you adopt our recommendation until October 1 of next year, but would change how those amounts are earned or accrued, but not the amount that an employee is eligible to earn or accrue. What I would like to do is to ask the council if there are any questions as I talk about each one of these, so that if you have issues, you don't have to wait to the end to do that. Are there any questions about the vacation leave proposed policy? Okay. Then I'll talk about the sick leave proposed policy, which has a similar change in how things are accrued, in that currently sick leave accrues based on attendance over a month's term rather than a year's term, and is subject to reduction. Similarly, we're suggesting that that would be earned through attendance or use of paid leave, and it will clearly show on the pay stub. Because one of the things the Kronos system will do will be having the supervisor's ability to approve, requirement, not just ability, to review and approve utilization. It made sense to allow the department head, in addition to the city manager, to approve the substitution of some forms of leave for sick leave purposes. So this is expanding the responsibility and authority of department heads as to these sick leave substitutions. Are there any questions about the sick leave policy as proposed? Okay. Now, section 1008 with holidays is another one that we're proposing would not take effect until October 1st, 2015, but needs to be built into the programming now. There are several changes with that policy that we're proposing to you. The first one to be aware of is that, as you know, we have a number of employee, a number of departments that have to provide service to the public 24/7, 365. There are employees who have to work on holidays, police, fire, water, and sewer. We have some department, particularly solid waste, that works on some holidays but not all holidays. So we need to have provisions for holiday work. The city has chosen, it is under no legal obligation to do so, it has chosen for many years to pay holiday pay, which is in essence, an additional day of pay if an employee is required to work on one of the city's 11 official holidays. The holiday pay has been provided to the solid waste department by allowing them to take a floating holiday. If they're required to work, they get hours that they can take and schedule like a vacation. We are proposing to expand that to make sure it's clear that employees in other departments other than police and fire, as a general, can take floating holidays also if they are required to work. Police and fire have been paid for all of their holidays simply twice a year. Those holiday pays over the course of the year have been grouped and paid twice a year. The new system will allow us to pay after the holiday has been worked, but more frequently than twice a year. Because of the system of paying twice a year, it means that employees in police and fire have been paid for the two December holidays, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, in advance of actually working those holidays. Now they will be paid after the work has been done because if they didn't work that day, it was very manual and cumbersome to pay them, and then they didn't work, they weren't entitled to the holiday pay, sort of, you know, getting that back in essence. What we have done, because there were a number of questions about how this would work, Mr. Godwin has, and I'll ask him now if he'll share with the members of the council, a calendar that will make clear to you how the holiday pay will be for this year through the implementation of the system. So you'll see a full year, and again, it won't impact anybody until October of next year. And Glenn? So, one of the things that we did, as I mentioned to you, was look to what the consultant who worked with our, do you want to just hand them out? Yeah. Did you just have them? Oh, I thought you. Okay. We had a failure to communicate. But, Mr. Godwin, why don't you walk the council through that?
What I would like to do is just summarize the holiday pay schedule, as Ms. McGannon has done a very good job of explaining. Specifically for those police and fire employees who are paid, in essence, who are scheduled to work on those holidays, there would not be a change this year. So in essence, for those holidays that they would expect to be paid, and those would be Thanksgiving Day, the day following Thanksgiving, of course, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, there would not be a change. Those would be paid on December the 12th of this year. Likewise, in 2015, the first four holidays, New Year's, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, no change. Those would be paid on June the 12th, 2015. The change would then occur immediately at the date, as Ms. McGannon explained, of the go-live system date on October 1st for the new software. And that would, in essence, mean that Independence Day and Labor Day of 2015, which would normally be paid in December, would be paid sooner. They would be paid actually on October the 2nd of 2015. Of course, that is subject to the go-live date and the implementation date with human resources and finance and judicial. The following five holidays in 2015 would be paid in the pay period immediately after the holiday is worked. And so in essence, those pay dates would be right behind those holidays. And then in 2016, those pay dates, again, would be the pay date or the payroll period date immediately after the holiday. So in essence, the transition for change really wouldn't be felt by those employees who are working in police and fire until Independence Day, 2015, and that payday would actually be sooner than what they were expecting. And I will get a chart, a summary chart out to the council, but I want to make sure that I had some time to explain first.
Another aspect of the holiday pay, as indicated, employees are getting paid both their regular pay for the time of work and the extra days' pay. The city currently requires that an employee who's scheduled to work, work at least half the holiday before they are entitled to the holiday pay. The city's consultant recommended that the city do what 90% of those employers who choose to pay holiday pay do, which is to require that an employee to be eligible to receive holiday pay work the day before and the day after the holiday, as well as the full day of the holiday. City staff was not recommending that to you. They were recommending that the policy be changed to require that the whole day of the holiday be worked before an employee was entitled to the holiday pay. A question was posed to staff about what happens if an employee is injured on the job. It doesn't seem right that they would not get holiday pay. I, in responding to that question initially, was incorrectly understood that, and so I want to clarify that if somebody was injured on the job, that would count as it does on non-holidays, as a day of work for that first day of injury. So if we had an employee who was injured on a holiday, was unable to complete the assigned shift because they were injured on the holiday, they would still get holiday pay for that day. But one of the recommendations is that an employee would be required to work the whole holiday, knowing that if they are unable to work because they have a workers' comp injury, they would still get the holiday pay. So there are several changes to the holiday section, not, let me emphasize, in terms of the number of city holidays or the fact that the city is choosing to pay employees who are scheduled to work an extra day of pay. It is being expanded to allow floating holidays for other employees, to make payments for holidays sooner for police and fire, but to require that the eligibility standard be attendance for the full assigned time. If, we were talking about a firefighter who is just assigned a 12-hour day, it may be their Kelly Day period, and they only worked 12 hours on the holiday, if they were assigned 12 and they worked 12, they would get the holiday pay. But if you are someone in the, you know, Water and Sewer Department, and you're assigned to be there seven and a half hours, you would have to be there seven and a half hours to get the holiday pay. So there are, as I say, several changes to the holiday pay, but not in the days of holiday or the amount of money that would be paid out. And I would be happy to answer any questions about holiday pay.
I think employee had to work four hours.
They have to work half. Whatever their assigned period is, it could be 10 hours in solid waste, it could be 24 hours in the fire department, it could be, you know, so whatever it is, it's at least half in order to be eligible for the extra pay.
Right. And I'm the one, I brought up about, you know, what about if a firefighter, police officer, whatever is injured in the line of duty? I'd like to see that changed to where they would get paid. On the other half of that, when we talked about the reason why we were making this change was we're going with this new software program, and it would be expensive to make an exception.
We're trying to avoid having to do manual overrides. We're wanting to have the system be programmed so it can deal with all the expected issues.
Right. And that's a little bit of the problem I have. I think in our society today, we let computers kind of dictate over personal feelings of people. In this case, I would like to see us make an exception through the department head. Safe instance, I come to work, and if I don't work my whole shift, maybe I get a call, my son, well, my mom just died, or whatever. You know, when family things come up, unforeseen things that we can't control, it's act of God, I feel like that we are paying these people, and I understand the system, to do what we want them to do. And in this case, I would like to see the department heads or the supervisors be able to make that call and pay the employees. Because, you know, I come to work, get a call, something happened to my son, well, I'm out, and I haven't worked but, let's say, five hours. I came to work with the intention of working all day, but unforeseen things come out, up, so I feel like, I would like to see us treat our employees from a human standpoint that let the supervisor make the call as to whether they get the pay.
And I understand your point of view, and let me just, on staff's behalf, sort of give the ultimate thing. Your, you know, the workers' comp issue, there does not need to be any change to policy. You know, I was wrong when we spoke, and I hope you understand that I learned more, and it's corrected. There's no need for action. In terms of other situations, we don't have an exception now with the half-day requirement. In your five-hour example, it would depend what your shift was, five hours might be sufficient. The city has the ability to, a generous sick leave policy, that employees are allowed to use sick leave for bereavement leave or other kinds of family emergencies that may come up, FMLA, using sick leave and that sort of thing. And so there's no question that were you an employee and you left, you would get pay. It would simply be, you would not be entitled to double pay in that situation, and it is the council's prerogative if they wish to do that. I think staff would feel it would be better to leave the policy as it is with only a half-day requirement than to build in this possibility of exception for these unusual circumstances because it is so hard to say which circumstance should justify it and which should not.
And that's where I just have a little problem with it.
I understand.
If I come to work and I'm coming expecting to work all day and to get the time, double time or time and a half or whatever they get for the holiday pay, and here, again, an act of God, something unforeseen happens, I feel like an exception should be made and the employee get what they came into work to get, and it go through the department head. I would just like to see that changed because unforeseen things happen, and we should not penalize our employee even with sick time or vacation time when something like that happens. I just think it's an injustice to our employees. I think an exception should be made, and it should be made through the department head or either through our city manager, and the people get their pay that they expected to get when they came to work. Now, if they leave sick or something, that's one thing, but I'm talking about unforeseen things. I feel like we should pay our employees their double time.
How, I question, how would you have a criteria for that? Would it be two hours or four hours?
Well, you don't know. I could come to work expecting to be there all day, and in an hour, I get a call, my mom just died, well, I'm out. And I feel like if I came expecting that double time pay, I mean, I think I should be paid for it. I don't feel like I should have to use my vacation time or my sick time. That's something unforeseen, and that's just my opinion, and that's the human side of decisions we have to make sometimes, and let it run through the department head. Mr. Cromley, what do you think about it?
Every employee is going to get paid for the holiday.
Right.
What we're talking about are the folks who are assigned shifts where they're going to work that holiday.
Right.
In which case, they would get paid for the time worked in addition to the holiday pay that all other employees receive. The policy currently is set up with the 50% rule, that if you work half of your assigned shift, we go ahead and complete the day as if you had worked the entire day. Again, I'll fall back on Ms. McGannon. I did not work closely on this policy, but I think we would prefer that as to an open-ended rule, that if I worked one hour and had a family emergency, or I worked 20 hours and I had a family emergency, then the city would fill in the rest of the day as if I had been at work.
Can I ask you, I mean, just to make sure I'm clear on what you're asking is, so if employees, there's a holiday, they're scheduled to work eight hours, they're going to, they come in, they're going to get paid for eight hours whether they show up or not as a holiday, correct? Is that right?
If they're scheduled to, if they're scheduled to work.
Yeah.
And they work six hours, and then they have to take two hours of sick leave, okay? They would have worked half their assigned eight hours, so in addition to being paid for the time worked, they would get holiday pay in addition to that. If they were assigned to work eight hours and they showed up and they only worked two hours, and then they had to leave, they would have to use six hours of sick leave or vacation leave, whatever the reason they had to leave was. But they would not get the double pay for the holiday because they had not met the requirement that they work on the holiday for the full amount of their assigned time.
And I think employees, a lot of them have budgeted for this double time or time and a half. I don't know how, double time.
It's double. It's, you work one day and get paid for two.
And if they are scheduled to work and they have budgeted for it, you know, we all live on a budget. I don't feel like an act of God, unforeseen thing that they should be penalized and have to use vacation or sick. I mean, that's just, that's my human feeling about it. I just, I just don't agree with it, but I'm just speaking that I don't agree. I just think we should not do that and let it be the discretion of the supervised department head. They came in expecting to do that, something unforeseen happened. I don't think we should penalize them and not give them, I mean, they would be there, now, sick is one thing. I'm not, I'm talking about the death or family emergency, accident or something. I think that they should get paid, what they came in and felt like they were going to get paid. I guess I've just had so much tragedy in my family, I just, I'm very sensitive to things happening to people. Unforeseen.
It's just kind of hard to know where exactly to draw the line, and we'd have to have some kind of policy.
Death, something like, you can specify, we specify everything else.
My only concern with doing that, though, is, you know, first of all, I don't want to make light, but I'm in the construction
I think that they should get paid what they came in and felt like they were going to get paid. I guess I've just had so much tragedy in my family. I just, I'm very sensitive to things happening to people unforeseen.
It's just kind of hard to know where exactly to draw the line and we'd have to have some kind of policy.
Death, something like, you can specify, we specify everything else.
My only concern with doing that, though, is, you know, first of all, I don't want to make light, but I'm in the construction industry and as we're talking about this, if you can figure out how to make people work the day before or after the holiday, I would like to know that because that's something we have an issue with.
Me too.
But I don't know how you say, okay, is this type of emergency greater than this type of emergency? Because, you know, if I'm at work and my son breaks his arm, I'm leaving to go check on my son, but that may not be in the list that we have talked about. So I guess that's the, how do we define, I guess I'm asking a question, how would you define, okay, is a child sick, wife on the side of the road, car, in a car, a car accident or car broken down, how big would that list be or how do we define that?
It's the difficulty of trying to define it in a way that would be fair and clearly understood by employees. That is one of the reasons staff is recommending that you not do such a thing. But the examples that Ms. Gales Harris has given, you could say an exception of, you know, death occurring on the day of the holiday, a member of the immediate family or hospitalization of the immediate family occurring on the day of the holiday. But, you know, what if it was the night before the holiday and you were away, you know, that the hospitalization occurred or the death occurred, you know, the day before, but you're just hearing about it? Somebody's, you know, in imminent, in hospice care and about to go and they call the family. Well, you know, it's, where do you draw the line is the difficult thing.
Labor.
Yeah, yeah, somebody is going to give birth, yeah.
My dad's on my birthday.
And so I think there's no question that your city supervisors would be supportive of an employee who had to leave for that kind of unexpected family circumstance. And there's no question that the city has paid leave to not, economic disincentive, we provide paid leave for people to do it. But the holiday pay is an inducement, an incentive to make sure you have required coverage on those essential services that you have to have covered on a holiday. I think certain holidays particularly, you know, are very important family holidays that everybody would like to spend with their family, but the city has to have services covered then. And the idea is over time, it rotates, you know, people take their turn and, you know, may celebrate early. So it's, it's very hard to come up with a system that will be fair in all circumstances. We thought it would be cleanest to just do it, if you worked the hour, if you worked the hours, we needed you to work, you got the extra pay. If you didn't, you didn't. But again, staff reflects, you know, what the council wants and as indicated, for, excuse me, for programming reasons, if you want to give staff direction, now is the best time to do it rather than later, after we have somebody who was required to work on a holiday, there was a family death and they didn't get the extra pay. And again, since the pay now, when we pay it after the holiday is worked, you know, you can't count your chicken before it's hatched. You can't count on holiday pay until you've worked the holiday is sort of, you know, another aspect of this policy change proposal.
All right. Two comments about this. One is, you know, another part of this too is kind of the other side of it is that if we don't have some really clean, clear lines, it's also a fairness issue to the ones that do work the whole day, who do put their time in and get the hours in. If people are able to take advantage of it or something like that, you know, I know that's not what you're talking about, but, you know, if it does, if it's not, if there are blurred lines and you're leaving it up to the discretion of somebody, then it brings into play, well, you approved that for so-and-so, but you didn't approve it for me or so-and-so, you know, another person. So it's, it gets real blurry. Now, the other side of it is, what about if it's really, you know, you're talking about an act of God, what if it is something like a tornado or something like that that creates literally the incapability for someone to fulfill their shift, you know, perhaps, you know, that's a, I don't know, do we have things in place for that?
That would be injured on the job.
Not necessarily injured, but just, the building is damaged and you got to leave.
I mean, we had several key city staff people whose homes were damaged in the tornado and they showed up and worked. And I'm not saying that they had to do that, their job wasn't in jeopardy, but their sense of public service and their obligation was such that they came, you know.
I'm talking about here, you know, I mean, if something happened like at this office or at their office, wherever they may be, and they literally can't do their job where they're, they're at work.
Oh, if they showed up to work and the city sent them home, yeah, then the city would be the one saying, your hours have changed, go home. So their schedule would change. If the city says, I need you for these hours, city says, I don't need you anymore because you can't work productively because the building is damaged, then they would have met their obligation to show up and do what the city needed them to do. If what the city needs changed are, they'd still be entitled, in my opinion, to the holiday pay because the criteria, the prerequisite for getting the holiday pay would be working what the city asks you and schedules you to work.
Ah, that's helpful.
And you said that because the city sent you home, you can't do your job. I'm going back to, let's say, death, I can't sit and do my job. I guess what I'm saying is too, sometimes here again, I think we take the human factors out of some decisions we make as a city. Now, speaking of specifics, we have a lot of rules and regulations with the city that exceptions are made that people don't necessarily agree with. I guess, I see where the council looks like we're going. I just want to go on record that I totally disagree with this one. I feel like the people should be paid in case of an act of God emergency. I just want to go on record saying I totally disagree, but it's okay.
Okay. If there aren't other questions about 1008, about holidays, I'll go on to 1009. And now we're reaching the ones that we're talking about having an effective date sooner than October 1st, 2015. The overtime and compensatory time policy that's in Section 1009 for non-exempt employees is one that we believe we can and should change before October 1st of next year, but that we would not change until the council decides they agree with staff's recommendation. And then we would have an information piece that would go to department heads because they're going to have new responsibilities or more clearly stated responsibilities and to employees. So we'd ask you to make the effective date now, but we wouldn't actually start putting the new system in place until there had been ample opportunity for information and education and choice. What we are trying to do with the new policy is clean up some things to make it clearer how the overtime and compensatory time programs can and should work. As the council members know, the state does not have a Fair Labor Standards Act provision or does the city, but the federal government does. And our system, our program is intended to comply with that and to take advantage of allowing, which government employees have, employers have and private business does not, of allowing compensatory time when an employee actually works more than 40 hours in a seven-day work week. We also take advantage of the opportunity we have to have work periods that are longer than a work week, that are tour of duty, which are 21 days for police officers and 28 days for firefighters. And you measure entitlement to overtime based not on 40 hours per week, but on 128 hours and 212 hours respectively for those departments. We are making it clear that a couple of things exist. One, there is what is often referred to as gap time between those time limits at which overtime at time and a half must be paid, over 40 hours, 128 hours and 212 hours, that if you're working more than your regularly scheduled period of time, but less than the point at which time and a half needs to be paid, that you get paid for that. You get straight time pay for that at a one rate, you know, if somebody is scheduled to work 37 and a half hours a week and they work 38 hours a week, they have half a time more than they were scheduled to work. And so they would not be entitled to time and a half for that time, but they would be entitled to an additional half hour of pay. We are saying that, just making that clear. It's what we've been doing, it's no change, we're just making it clear. We are making clear that the city is in, that has choices about the compensatory time program. So we're calling for department heads to make an annual determination whether or not employees in their department can participate in comp time or, and at taking time at time and a half, or whether they are to be paid overtime at time and a half. So department heads would be making a decision annually about who can participate, which can vary by unit, how much compensatory time they can accumulate or whether or not there's some types of time for which they have to be paid. For example, the police department gets grants. If somebody is, who's being funded, whose work is being funded by that grant, works overtime, we would want them to be paid overtime from the grant funds rather than to accrue compensatory time, which would be taken at some point later. Similarly, in the fire department, depending upon scheduling, we've always said that the first four hours of overtime would be paid. That may or may not be how we continue it, but it would be enabling the department heads to make a decision, subject to approval by the city manager. And then employees would be making a once-a-year election whether they wish to pay, participate in the compensatory time program or to receive payment for all overtime worked. That once that election is made, that would be applicable to all time other than time that the city says we want you to be paid for. And the current policy says that it's to be a one-time election, but in practice, those elections had been occurring far more frequently. So you can say it's liberalizing, if you will, what the policy says, but it may be restricting some choices in a practical sense. Additionally, one of the, I should talk about how we envision this working, that this election, the decision by the department head, election by employees, we would have made by February of each year so that department heads would know what their employees were choosing to do so that they could budget appropriately for overtime if employees were choosing that they wanted overtime payments. And that could be reflected in the budget so that these elections would take effect on the start of the fiscal year with July 1. There are some other changes that I don't think are of as much consequence to many employees, but you've had a chance to read them. Are there other aspects of 1009 that you would like me to address or can I move on to 1010? Okay, I'll move on. 1010 is a program for compensatory time for exempt employees who work more than 42 and a half hours a week. We don't have currently any employees in the plan. We think it should be repealed. Section 1037 dealing with attendance and absenteeism represents a shift in emphasis for us. We're making a number of references to how employees' job status is protected based on the kinds of leave that our, the city provides for them and are deleting the reference to an automatic termination at the end of one year. So it is clear that each individual employee's circumstance will be looked at based on its particular facts. I would like to modify what I said in the cover letter to you about having that take effect immediately, but we'd allow at least 90 days before it impacted anybody who was on leave. I should have made clear that that was anybody who was on leave who had not already been absent for a one-year period. You know, if you've already been absent from work for a one-year period, we wouldn't call for an additional 90 days. Are there questions about Section 1037 that anyone has? Okay. Section 1041 is a new section that simply describes and puts in, I don't know if concrete is the right word for the employee name, but puts down clearly practices and policies that the city has and has had for some time, which are relevant to FLSA compliance and the timekeeping system that we are setting up with Kronos. And that is the overview. I did give you at your desks tonight a copy of an email I sent you earlier in the day about the particular subsection of 1003. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have about that. And I want to ask Glenn what aspects of these policies I may have overlooked.
Nice job.
Okay. He doesn't have anything to add. Thank you, Glenn. So with that, it's staff's recommendation to you that the actions as summarized on the cover letter be taken with adoption of these policies with the modification I mentioned as to the 1037 taking effect now if somebody has already been absent for a year as opposed to waiting 90 days. And with your staff's assurance that information about all of these changes will be given now so that employees don't get confused about when certain things are changing and what is changing.
Ms. McGinn, do we need to take each one of these individually?
You do not have to. If any, if the council wishes to, you may, but if there is, you could treat it like the consent agenda and pull one out and deal with it separately, you have choices.
But that way you.
I think Councilman Washington has a question.
Well, I just want to make sure I understand this totally. What are the downsides, back to the holiday pay?
Yes, sir.
What are the downsides of leaving the process like this?
Okay, the downsides are a couple. One, we're currently paying people for holidays pay before they have worked the holiday. If something happens, if they have a death, if they get sick and they don't work the holiday pay, then we're having to come back and undo it. You know, that's, that's just bad financial and personnel management. We don't want to pay in advance. We want to pay after somebody has earned it. So we, that's one reason not to allow it the way it is. Another reason not to allow it the way it is is, you know, this gets money to people sooner. Now, for those police and firefighters who may have gotten used to thinking of holiday and pay in December, that's what I do my Christmas shopping with, you know, they'll, they'll get it sooner, but they won't get, you know, the lump sum that they might be used to. So that's one of the reasons why we're not proposing any change for this year. That pay will come as scheduled and we're, you know, they'll have this long lead time to plan for it. In the same way that the city gave the long lead time for the change from the 24 pay periods in a year to the 26 pay periods was to allow people a chance to plan for it. The other reason not to, the reason to change it is, I always think policy and practice should match up. We currently have a discrepancy because our policy just says solid waste people can take floating holidays and we need our practice of letting other people take floating holidays be clearly allowed. be clearly allowed under our policy. The, you know, perceived downside is the one that Ms. Kells-Harris identified, that if, well, although she, sort of a different aspect of it, you know, if you were an employee who was not, for good or bad reason, not able to work your full scheduled time, and you worked half the time under the new policy, you would not get holiday pay in addition to your regular pay, you would just get your regular pay. If you, if you wished to adopt the holiday pay proposal, except for changing from working the whole time to half the time, you know, you could certainly do that. I wouldn't throw, I don't know if it's a baby in the bath water statement, but I wouldn't change, I wouldn't fail to adopt the rest of the policy, just because of that aspect of the policy. Is that responsive to your question?
Yeah. Now, because I, I think I understand that you all are basically in the blueprint process right now, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the system is being designed based on these decisions.
Based on your policies, or the policies that, well, any policy.
We're asking you to make a call, so that we can design around your call tonight.
All right, and when the system is implemented, I'm assuming Glenn, you'd want to get, somebody is going to be, somebody in payroll is going to be putting, doing something with this information, correct?
Well, there'll be electronic inputting by employees.
By employees.
It will be subject to reviews and approval by a person who's in the supervisory chain for that employee. It will be able to be reviewed, you know, the city manager, the HR director will be able to look at the information currently, what, you know, what we have now is this long lag time, and some things, like compensatory time, HR doesn't get. That's kept at the department level. So under the new system, HR will be able to see it, the employee will be able to see it, city manager will be able to see it, and the police chief will be able to see it. If it's police department, you know, the department head, even if he's not signing off on approval, he'll be able to look at it and manage it, you know, differently. So it will be much more transparent for many more people. But the idea is to build the system around the city's choices, so that the payroll personnel do not have to go in and make adjustments, day in, day out, for individualized circumstances, that we will have developed sufficiently uniform and consistently good city policies, that when that employee punches it in, if there's any coding question, you know, should it be coded in as a holiday or not, if somebody punches in holiday, you know, for, for, you know, yesterday as opposed to Tuesday, you know, the system will kick it back, or the supervisor will kick it back, but, so that the HR personnel, payroll people, are not having to, you know, get individualized sheets of explanations, or phone calls, or emails, and going in and adjusting. And the cheerleader for that, the strongest voice on that is Mr. Godwin, so I hope I have heard from him, but that's, I think, what the structure is going to be.
Can I ask one more question to you, just to make sure I'm clear?
No limit.
Sorry, it may be for Glenn, I asked you the other day, and I don't know that we knew. Just so I'm clear, somebody is scheduled to work eight hours on a holiday, they come in and currently work four hours. We pay them for the four hours that they work, and then do we pay them for eight hours of a holiday?
Yes.
So if they have to leave early, for no matter what that reason is, we're currently not only paying them for their work time, so they're going to get paid four hours plus eight. Is that right? If they, do they, is, do they get 150% of that typical day in that scenario?
They work half of a day typically, right?
All right.
Or half of a shift.
So we are taking a benefit from the employees by implementing this?
Well, no, I think, I think, I think we're following, really, in between a consultant's
recommendation of just about everyone out there, is a day before and the day after to be eligible for the holiday credit, to say for those employees who are scheduled to work the holiday, and I think it was brought up earlier, that some folks are left behind when employees only work half a shift, and those who are left behind, and oftentimes, even here in this building, for example, on New Year's Day, if those employees leave, it's left for the rest of the employees to shoulder the workload. So I think this, this strikes a good balance, in terms of the reality of staying in the workplace.
Well, usually with corporations, holidays, a lot of people are left behind, because a lot of people take time off. So that's kind of expected to have a skeleton crew in your departments. But, I mean, you know, you're just going to have a skeleton crew, and the others that are there are going to have to take the slack. That's why they don't let so many off for a holiday, you know, because someone has to keep the operation running. But we're going back to saying, the rule now is, if you work just four days, you're going to get your vacay, I mean, you're going to get the holiday pay.
No.
Under the, if you leave within four, you have to work four hours, if you have a...
It's half a shift, whatever that shift is.
Well, half a shift, twelve hours for fire, and...
Right, half a shift.
Okay, and you get your vacay, I mean, your holiday pay, right?
Yes.
So we are taking away from them the holiday pay if they don't work.
Raising the eligibility standard.
Correct.
Yes.
Right, but you're still taking away from the employee.
They don't have any right to it, unless they show up and work that half-day. And what we're saying is now, raising the eligibility standard, you don't have any right to it, unless you show up and work all the time you were scheduled to work.
And we're still taking a benefit from the employees, still taking that from them.
In that scenario that I laid out, essentially, though, what we're doing is we're paying triple time. If somebody comes for four hours, we're paying them for twelve hours, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
So we're paying them triple time, as it sits right now, so all we're really doing is getting this back to where they have to work the entire shift to get double time. It's, you know, I mean, I, I'm, just want to make sure my math was right.
Just a quick question. We have, say, for our police department, our fire department, just to use those two, because when we talk about holiday pay, those are predominantly our two departments that are working holidays. If, if we have a crew at a fire station, and I assume that they have, there's certain people that they have to have that, to run a shift.
Minimum staffing.
So if, if they got below that minimum staffing level, excuse me, we have to call someone else in, so we would not only be paying double time for the person that comes in, we're paying double time for the person that's not working.
Relief person.
The relief person, so technically, we're paying quadruple time.
Yep.
That would just be a concern, because at the end of the day, the taxpayers are the ones who are paying for this. So how we justify and work that, which I understand what you're saying, but how we can mesh those together, and really what you're saying, you're not necessarily taking anything away, we're just saying if you're there to work the time.
I think our department supervisors are very conscious of family, and try to schedule, you know, to balance the city's need for, you know, professional service, particularly in the, in the public safety area, and the desire of everyone to be home with their family on holidays, and they, they schedule to what they believe is the necessary bone. And, and if the people, you know, aren't there, then we're either understaffed and at some risk, or we're having to disrupt somebody who had planned to be off. You know, as I said, overtime, it evens out, you know, especially in the fire service, you know, you have three shifts, and it, you know, it evens out over time. And so somebody who might have worked the holiday the previous year, thought they were going to be off this year, and they get called in. Now, I can't say, because I don't believe either Mr. Godwin or I made inquiry of fire management, as to how often they might have to call somebody in. I don't know that it has, in fact, happened, but it could, under the construct of the question you posed.
I understand, I still have my opinion.
Okay, I know.
Absolutely.
You know, we're talking about the taxpayers' money, and I can understand that, but I know, we've been a little reckless with taxpayers' money, sometimes, you know, on some of the things we do, but I'm okay with it. I just want to go on the record, I disagree with this portion of it, but I'd say let's lump it all together, and let's vote.
Got a motion?
It is.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second.
Ms. Wright, any other discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Kells-Harris? Aye. Mr. Lulance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Aye, sorry, Madeline, I'm, I'm good. Item 17 has been withdrawn, deferred for a later date, so we'll move to item 18, Consider Recommendations of the Chief of Police with regards to Third Amendment with American Traffic Solutions Incorporated. Chief Chris Martin.
Mayor, good evening. You got to me a little quicker than I thought you would there for a moment. Pleasure to be with you tonight, I know it's been a long night. I also know that many, if not all of you, have had a lot of calls over the recent days about this particular item, and we had a good deal of public comment last week at the open-mic night, so if you'll bear with me, I want to take a little bit of time to talk about the red light process. If I'm recalling correctly, Mayor McFarland, Vice Mayor Young, Councilman Washington, I believe, were all on the council at the time this program was put in place in 2007/8. The remaining members of the council, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Lulance, Ms. Harris, and Mr. Shackleton, who will be joining you all soon, I don't believe Mr. Shackleton was still on the council when this was originally adopted, he had just gone off, as I recall. So if you'll bear with me, I would like to talk about some of these things a little bit, and then we've got a number of staff members that are here. Should you have technical questions that you'd like to have answered, I know some of you have posed questions about signal timing, and sequencing, and all of those kinds of things, and we have some staff available tonight to answer those questions. Tonight, we present for your consideration the Third Amendment to the Contract with American Traffic Solutions, we'll call them ATS hereafter, for the provision of an automated red light enforcement system, and it's my recommendation to the council tonight that you approve this amendment to extend the term until November 30, 2015. In addition to the agenda letter and the contract extension document that were provided to you, we also provided a detailed summary of the Automated Red Light Enforcement System prepared by police staff. There was a red light safety camera program analysis provided from ATS that told a good deal about what that program has done. We provided an average annual daily traffic count sheet from our traffic department for the six intersections with red light cameras, as well as an intersection inventory that showed you all of the signalized intersections in our city. And then, I think as requested by the council, Ms. McGannon and Ms. Baker prepared and provided a, an extensive legal review of the red light camera traffic enforcement, as we said at your request. Tonight, as we go through this process, there are several city staff members, as I mentioned, that are available to answer questions that you may have, and if you bear with me, I'd like to identify them. Mr. Crumley was instrumental in helping to oversee the original contract with ATS four years ago, and if you have specific questions about that contract language, certainly he can speak to those. Ms. McGannon is more than, more than well-prepared to talk about any legal questions you may have. Dana Richardson, our Transportation Director, is here, and Ron Balachandran, our Traffic Engineer, is here tonight to answer questions, as we said, regarding intersection, signalization, and related concerns. Vicky Ordoneez has come back from City Court, should you have any questions about fines and court-related issues regarding red light citations. I think the mayor mentioned, or recognized earlier, Don Schubert is here. Don, would you raise your hand? He's our red light enforcement officer, and has issued the lion's share of a volume of citations over the six years of this program, we'll talk about that in just a minute. There were questions a few days ago about, about where the data came from, in some of this crash data analysis. Fairly new employee, that's been working with the police department now for a number of months, Ms. Kathy Moon is back there, she's our crime data analyst. Kathy, if you'd raise your hand, she is here and can answer questions, if you have any, about how that crash data retrieval and analysis process worked. And we have two gentlemen that are seated in the back of the room tonight. David Mast is our Account Manager for American Traffic Solutions, and his boss is with him. Jason Norton, who is the Regional Vice President of Account Management for ATS. Gentlemen, welcome, we're glad to have you with us tonight. Also got two fine members of my senior staff, Deputy Chief Mike Bowen and Assistant Chief Roy Fields. Red means stop. Across this nation, and beyond, laws are enacted by governing bodies just like this one, that require obedience to traffic signals. Those are there to provide for the safety of our motorists and our pedestrians that travel through our intersections. Driving through a red traffic signal is a violation of the law in the state of Tennessee. It's a violation of the law in the city of Murfreesboro. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no constitutional right that allows a driver to violate the law and endanger themselves, or endanger the motorists and pedestrians that share the roadway with them around a congested intersection. Red means stop. It's that simple. Let's stop and think about this for just a minute. A motor vehicle is probably the most, arguably, the most dangerous piece of equipment that most of us will ever operate. In the state of Tennessee, and in the city of Murfreesboro, on an average, three times as many people are killed every year in motor vehicle crashes than are the victims of homicides. Three times as many. In 2006, the Federal Highway Administration reported that the rate of fatal motor vehicle crashes at traffic signals was rising faster than any other type of fatal crash nationwide. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, NHTSA, there were more than 2.3 million reported intersection-related crashes, approximately 733,000 injury crashes, and more than 7,700 fatalities in 2008, the year we started this program. And that year alone, red light running caused 762 deaths across this nation. Insurance Institute for Highway Safety reported that in 2012, a little more recent data, 683 people were killed, and an estimated 133,000 were injured in crashes that involved red light running. And in data that I got yesterday, from the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security, for the years of 2009 through 2014, year-to-date, failure to obey traffic controls is the fourth most frequent driver factor in intersection-related crashes, and the eighth most frequent driver factor in all crashes in the state of Tennessee. This is a serious issue. In 2008, with the support of this council, the Murfreesboro Police Department began using Automated Red Light Camera Enforcement System to address this serious issue, and our objective then, and now, was to increase safety by reducing the number of vehicle crashes at all signalized intersections in Murfreesboro. Since that time, this enforcement program has contributed to making all intersections in Murfreesboro safer, by changing driver attitudes and behavior concerning compliance with red light signal controls. The data that you have presented to you tonight provides trending models from 2008 through 2014, and if you look at that data, you'll see some fluctuations in it from one year to the next. But either way you want to look at that data, through the six years of this program operation, the change in crashes at intersection in this city have been nothing short of remarkable. Here's what the data tells you. For the fiscal year of 2007/8, this was the year before we started the program, there were 1,692 crashes reported at all signalized... were 1,692 crashes reported at all signalized intersections in Murfreesboro. Not just the six where the cameras would later go in, all signalized intersections in Murfreesboro. At that time, there were 122 signalized intersections, 1,692 crashes. For the most recently completed fiscal year, 2013/14, there were 797 crashes at all signalized intersections. Ladies and gentlemen, that's 52% reduction. You can call that what you want, you can slice that and dice it, you can look at however you want to look at that data, but six years later, in a city where the population has increased by 17,000 people in that same time period, where we are pretty certain that if you've got 17,000 more citizens, you've got a lot more people traveling your roadways, we have cut intersection crashes by half. Something is responsible for that. At the six intersections where the red light cameras would later go in, in 2007/8, there were 173 crashes, just at those six. In the year that just finished, 2013/14, there were 88. That's a 49% decrease. Remember, we were looking to decrease crashes at those intersections and increase safety. Either way you want to look at that, ladies and gentlemen, crashes at signalized intersections in the city of Murfreesboro have decreased. What does that mean? That means fewer crashes equals less personal injury, less property damage, less police resources spent investigating those crashes, and at the end of the day, that means safer roadways. The system is working. Let's talk about what a red light violation is for just a minute, because there's a lot of misconception about that. My dear friend Bart Walker, every time I'm on the radio and we talk about this, every now and then, he'll say, "Well, now, you can't run the yellow lights." That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a situation where a red light violation occurs when a signal is red prior to a vehicle crossing the white stop bar and entering the intersection, and then the vehicle continues on through that intersection while it's red. This is the only time that a vehicle owner receives a citation, the only time. There are no citations issued for a vehicle that proceeds through a green or a yellow, amber signal. This is important. There are no citations issued if any portion of the vehicle is touching that white stop bar. If your front bumper's over it, if your front tires are on it, if your rear tires are on it, you don't get cited. The benefit of that action goes to the driver, which is the way it should be. Now, Mr. Burris, if you would, sir, would you begin running some of that footage? We have a YouTube video here that ATS provided for us, and I will tell you, there are no crashes in this segment tonight. This is simply for the opportunity of showing you what some of this footage looks like, what a red light violation looks like, and we specifically exempted the crashes from this particular footage tonight. It's about a minute and 20 seconds of it, and we'll let it run for a few minutes on a loop, just so that you can see that. I'll remind you that for the purposes of our situation, state law and city ordinance exempts funeral processions and emergency vehicles with flashing lights from receiving citations. There's been a lot of discussion about the cost of this program. Our Finance and Tax Department for fiscal year 2013/14 reported that the program generated revenue of $1,115,884.60. We had expenses of $890,461.7, which left a revenue difference of $225,423.53. That revenue difference returns to the general fund, but you could say that that could be viewed to offset the cost of Officer Schubert's salary and benefits, the cost of adjudicating these cases through the Murfreesboro City Court, et cetera. But with the exception of those expenses, his salary and benefits, and the cost of adjudicating these cases through City Court, there are no taxpayer dollars in this program. Citizens of Murfreesboro didn't pay a penny for this equipment to be installed, and they don't pay a penny for this equipment to be operated, with those two exceptions. The revenue that drives this system comes from violators. Now, we provided in your materials a detailed history of the chronology of all of this, the process we went through when we researched and developed this prior to its implementation in 2007/8. It's late, and I'm not going to recap all of that, but certainly it's in your materials, and if you'd like for me to answer any questions about that, I'd be more than glad to do that. I will say to you that the reason we have a red light enforcement system is because in 2006 and '07, there was probably not a week that went by that my phone didn't ring from a citizen that said, "When are you going to do something about red light runners?" It's ridiculous. It's red plus two, red plus three, red plus four. And when we went out to try to look at that, we ran into some pretty interesting kinds of conventional enforcement challenges, and I'll tell you about that in just a minute. But before we get to there, let me tell you that when we started this program, we got very clear direction from the mayor and this council right off. The direction was, this program is about safety. That's all it's ever been about, never been about revenue production, still isn't about revenue production. The main focus has been reducing intersections collisions, which are the most serious collisions of signal-related crashes. We don't enforce right turns on red with two exceptions, and that's the intersections of Broad and Northfield and Old Fort Parkway and Thompson Lane, because they have two right turn lanes, and that innermost right turn lane is a unprotected or conflicted turn. So if you come up to that intersection, when that light's red and you try to turn right in that inside lane, you're probably turning into the path of another vehicle that may have the right of way, and he may hit you. So we enforce that. We have signage that says, "No right turn on red." You know, if that light's red, you've got to stop. We do enforce those two right turns on red, but none of the other ones, because when we talked about this to begin with, we recognized that any right turn on red where you don't stop is a violation. That rolling California stop where you make that right-hand turn, that's a violation of the law. It says you're supposed to stop before turning right on red. But you know, we don't have a lot of crashes created with that, and we didn't want this program to be seen as a revenue generator, so the mayor and council said, "We're not going to address those. We're not going to enforce those as a part of our program." Many cities chose to do that, and they got a backlash from local citizens who saw that as a revenue generator, and ultimately, the General Assembly stopped that, except for those situations where traffic studies show that that's a needed enforcement tool, and there are some where it is. Our system was never designed to be a revenue generator. It was always focused on safety, and what we were looking for was a way to automate that system, to give us the ability to enforce those violations and accomplish those goals. As you well know, there were six intersections that were selected. South Church Street at Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Memorial in Northfield, Rutherford Boulevard at John Bragg, and Old Fort at Thompson Lane, as well as Broad at Church and Broad at Northfield. And there's information in your packets about how those intersections were chosen and why they were chosen, and again, I'll skip past that. I mentioned earlier that it's our belief that the traffic counts have increased, as has our population. Census data provided by the Planning Department and the United States Census and several of our special census exercises indicated that our population in 2008 was 100,575. It had grown to 117,044 by July of 2013, significant increase in population over that period of time. In the handout that I provided you, according to the Tennessee Department of Transportation, the 2013 average annual daily traffic count for the six intersections where we have cameras, I was staggered by this number when I looked at it, 274,159 vehicles through those six intersections every 24 hours. And as we said earlier, we have 139 signalized intersections now, which was up from 22 when it started. So we'd get these complaints in 2007/8, and we'd send police officers out there to try to enforce those violations. And the way that we tried to do that was, we'd have a camera car set on one side of the observation or one side of the intersection, so that we could observe one approach to the intersection, which is an interesting point, because remember that at a multi-lane, high-volume intersection, you've got four sides usually, and you've got multiple lanes. So if I've got a camera car sitting on one side, he or she can only see one approach to that intersection, can't see the other three. So they're going to sit there, they're going to record any violations. Now, it's not feasible, it's not logistically feasible for them to stop from their location and run across the intersection to try to stop that car and write him a ticket, because they've got to go across six lanes of traffic that may be congested. They may get in a crash before they get on the other side of the intersection and stop the car. So we'd put a catch car on the other side, Blue Buick XYZ123, if he could see the tag number, and then the catch car on the other side would pull him over and write him a ticket. Sometimes, one stop car wasn't enough, because they were happening so fast, you'd need two. Now I've got three police cars sitting at one intersection, trying to enforce red light violations. Strikingly enough, one day, we got a call from a business owner that said, "I appreciate y'all being down here working this traffic around this intersection, but they're pulling cars over into my parking lot and blocking my business. Can you do something about that?" So we had complaints from that, and not to mention the fact that as we pulled people over into those lanes, we were creating traffic congestion on our own, which created safety issues for the police officers and for the violators, as well as all the other people that were traveling through the intersection. Conventional enforcement just didn't work very well. Plus, I'm only looking at one lane. Got two police cars, if not three, tied up there. It's about that time that red light systems became a viable option for policing, and we began to look at those. In that particular scenario, one other thing I want to tell you, if you go back to that conventional model, the taxpayers are paying for that enforcement method, because they're paying the salaries of the police officers, they're paying for the vehicles, they're paying for fuel, they're paying for everything connected to that, and the return on that investment is probably spotty at best, because you're going to pull over a limited number amount of, a limited number of cars in any particular shift where you might be doing that. So technology comes along. Now we've got a way that we can monitor all sides of an intersection, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We can use technology to work smarter, not harder, and all of those resources that are sitting in that intersection trying to enforce those red light violations, I can redeploy them to other, more pressing needs, and I'll talk about those in just a minute. System that we use now has 22 cameras that look at all of those lanes of approach to those intersections. And very simply, what that allowed us to do was to redirect those resources to some very powerful programs that we use out in the community. But one of the other things that it did was, now the taxpayers aren't paying all of the expenses connected to that enforcement operation, the violators are paying for that operation. People that run those red lights and that put all of us at risk are paying for that process. Force multiplier, I mentioned this to you a few moments ago. In recent weeks, I've made three or four presentations talking about Ferguson, Missouri. Post-Ferguson, Missouri, you heard community policing discussed a lot. You heard other innovative community policing-type strategies for dealing with law enforcement issues discussed. Today, I heard a lot of coverage about that. Well, in part, because we're able to redeploy those resources from things like red light enforcement. We've got a community policing unit that's focused in the inner city of our city and that deals with community policing issues. I have officers assigned to all of the Murfreesboro City Schools that aren't just there to have a presence every day, they're teaching drug resistance education and gang resistance, anti-drug, anti-violence education, as well as helping with issues in those city schools day in and day out. You were gracious enough to add some personnel to our budget this year that allows us to field a directed patrol unit that's able to target specific types of problems in our neighborhoods and deal with those things exclusive of having to be responding to calls for service. Remember, our Murfreesboro police staff is responding to 280 calls for service a day. So if we can maximize the benefit of these people for these special units, that does a lot about problem solving. We have an aggressive driving unit now that targets distracted drivers and people that create issues within our city with specific types of traffic issues, and I'll give you an example about that in just a minute. But one of the other things that we were able to put into place was a gang unit that's investigating violent crime day in and day out, and we've been able to do that because we leverage and maximize the resources that you provide for us. There's probably not a week that goes by now that somebody doesn't call me and say, "There's a problem with a traffic issue in my neighborhood. There's a problem with a school zone situation where we need extra enforcement." And I have resources that we can send out to deal with that and resolve that problem, in part, because they're not sitting at a red light doing red light enforcement. To put one observer car and one ticket rider, one stop car, at those six intersections where the cameras are, for one shift only, we estimate it will cost $1,800,000 a year. That includes cars, it includes the salary and benefits for the officers, it includes the fuel for those cars, but then even the bigger part of that, if we were willing to spend that money now, I've got 12 police officers sitting at those intersections doing conventional, inefficient, unsafe enforcement. And ladies and gentlemen, I have much better things, and we have much better things for them to do. Lot of public comment lately about the operation of this system and the criticism of the fine revenue that leaves the city and goes out of state to Arizona. We decided at the onset of this program, we did not want to own this equipment. Technology changes. I don't want to have to be looking at, and the city didn't want to have to be looking at, every three or four years, replacing all this equipment that costs millions of dollars. We wanted the company to own that equipment and maintain it and service it and help operate it, and as a part of that, when we asked for a turnkey program from these vendors, when ATS got this bid in 2010, they came in and redesigned the existing system that was here, put new cameras in, put new infrastructure in, put new recording devices in. The cost of that system was estimated at $110,000 per camera, that's 2.42 million in round numbers, and that capital investment was fronted at no cost to the city, not a penny. So part of the money that's being generated by the violators of these cameras, is it going to Arizona? Yes, it is, but part of that's got to defray that initial capital investment, and again, those costs are being borne by the violators. Been a lot of discussion about legal issues, and certainly, we have a great attorney here, and I am not one, but I will simply tell you that state law and city ordinance requires obedience to traffic signals. State law authorizes the use of unmanned traffic enforcement cameras for the purposes of enforcing traffic light signal violations, and our city code, 32-403, complies with all the requirements that state law sets forth. And one thing to add to that, the Tennessee Court of Appeals has upheld the constitutionality of the state statute, as well as Knoxville's Automated Traffic Enforcement Program in the case of Knoxville versus Brown, a 2008 decision, and I will tell you that I stood shoulder to shoulder with then-Chief Sterling Owen from Knoxville as we testified before the House and Senate Subcommittee when we were dealing with red light camera legislation a number of years ago. Our program may not be an exact mirror of Knoxville's, but it's very, very close, if it's not. When we first started this program, there was just a handful of cities in Tennessee that were using it, and in the information we provided to you, according to American Traffic Solutions and Redflex, the two largest providers of camera systems, in 2014, here are some of the cities in Tennessee that are using it, Memphis, Knoxville, and Chattanooga. And I noted that Memphis recently added 30 more cameras to its system, and Knoxville recently added 10 more. And the mid-sized cities, Clarksville, Jackson, Gallatin, Johnson City, Kingsport, and obviously Murfreesboro, and then there are a host of smaller cities that are listed there as well. Murfreesboro, and then there are a host of smaller cities that are listed there as well. Some people have asked, "Well, how effective is the program? Your ticket levels keep going up." Well, part of the reason that you see a greater number of citations, particularly 2010 and '11 forward, is when ATS took the system over, they redesigned the system, they put in more efficient cameras, they put in more efficient tracking mechanisms than what we had in the initial system. So it's capturing more violators. To begin with, the intersection of John Brack Highway and Rutherford Boulevard, that system never worked the way it was designed. You've got this high-speed traffic coming in from Woodbury, and it was capturing virtually no violators out there, we never did understand it. When they redid it after ATS took the system over, then not only did citations and captures go up out there significantly, but they went up all across the system as well. In ATS's report, they talk about recidivism in the program, and they say this, and this is a quote to them, "Most red light runners in Murfreesboro do not get a second ticket. The community's recidivism rate is 8%, which means that 92% of all violators who receive and pay a ticket do not violate again." Receive and pay a ticket, that's an important piece, and we'll look at that in just a moment. A couple of things that are interested here, obviously, the system collects still photographs and video images, they are reviewed by the staff at ATS and compared against a set of business rules, which we give them, that says, "Here's what is a violation based on our statute, based on our ordinance, and what the state law says, and here are the things that should be rejected." We talked about those just a few moments ago. After they make that first screen of those captured events, then they're sent to Murfreesboro Police, Officer Schubert, and a certified Murfreesboro Police Officer looks at that footage and makes those determinations. There is nobody at ATS that decides who issues these tickets here. Don Schubert or one of our other police officers makes that decision, and when police officers violate these signals, they get tickets, and they pay them. When sheriff's deputies get them, they pay them. When EMS drivers get them, they pay them. And I wasn't gonna set anybody out, Mr. Young, but I know there are a number of members of the council that have got them and paid them. As your police chief who travels through two of those intersections every single day, I am very attentive, because I know that would make an interesting story for Mr. Broden. We've issued 116,000 citations in these six years. And, you know, it's late, but I have to tell you, if you look at that crash data and you look at the number of citations that that issued, that young man sitting right there has probably done as much to impact the safety of intersections in the city of Murfreesboro in the last six years than probably most. I'm proud of him for the work that he's done, and I'm proud of the effect that that's had on our city in terms of reducing crashes and injuries and property damage. We talked about that crash data a little bit, there's been some suggestion that all of that information came from ATS, that it was scripted. Not true. This young lady right back here, Ms. Moon, and Mr. Schubert, and Kyle Evans, who would be here tonight, but he's taking an exam in law school, they're the three that scrubbed that data, prepared those statistics, and compiled those crash rates. That's our data, data that was provided to the Tennessee Department of Safety, and they sent it back to us. And just so you know, the way we determine what crash happens at an intersection is we look at the box of the intersection, if you will. But then we go 100 feet back from that intersection in every direction, because the Department of Safety says that if it's within 100 feet of that intersection, that it's intersection-related. And if it's at the intersection, or if it's intersection-related, I want you to have that data, so you can see what the program's doing. And that's the data that you get, that's the data that they've prepared for you to look at. Staff also reviewed the causes of rear-end type crashes, and it's interesting what they found, because in all of those rear-end crashes, what they said was, almost all of them cited following improperly, inattentive, and speed too fast as the primary reasons for the crash. No one in any of those crash reports, all of them that they reviewed, has said that the causes of the crash were the red light program. So if we look at that analyses, and I'm winding down here, but we already said, total crashes at all signalized intersections decreased from 1692 to 797, that's a 52.89% decrease. Rear-end crashes at all signalized intersections, at all signalized intersections, remember, we've only got cameras at six. Rear-end crashes at all signalized intersections decreased from 1,077 to 399, that's almost a 63% reduction. Side angle collisions decreased 35%. And if we look at those six intersections with automated enforcement, they're very similar. Total crashes reduced by 49%, I said that earlier. Rear-end crashes at automated enforcement intersections decreased 39% from 102 to 62. And side angle collisions, the most dangerous one, decreased from 71 to 26, 63%. Side angle collisions are the ones that people get killed in, and they get killed right here, unfortunately. We provided some information in there about citations issued. This is information that Ms. Ordonez provided, it's from City Court. If you look across there, you'll see those 116,000 citations over that period. Violators have paid $4,975,476.63 over the six years of that program. You'll also note that American Traffic Solutions began managing the collections of outstanding red light camera fines and costs in January of 2013. I apologize, there was a typo in your materials, it said January of 2014. They actually started that process in 2013, and Ms. Ordonez has also provided a table that shows that. So far, they have collected something over $421,000 of those outstanding fines, and we have 2.5 million that is outstanding, and they're continuing to work those outstanding fines. I provided some information in your package that says, "It's not like red light camera enforcement is the only thing we do." We have a team of people that staff our Murfreesboro Alcohol Countermeasures Team that focus on drunk drivers. Those people are out every night, they're working bars, checking for people that have had too much to drink. They regularly are recognized by MAD for more than 100 DUI arrests every year. That's a big part of traffic enforcement that we do. We have a police motorcycle unit that's working crashes during the daytime and doing traffic enforcement as well. And if you're out and about in the daytime, you'll see street appearance vehicles that are doing traffic enforcement and crash investigation. If you go through some of our residential neighborhoods, you'll see speed trailers deployed to try to get people to voluntarily reduce their speed and comply with posted speed limits. I hear oftentimes now that speed signs, Mr. Richardson, are suggestions. Certainly, nothing could be further from the truth. Last year, we established an aggressive driving unit to look for people that are texting and driving, and are doing dangerous things in their driving habits that endanger other people. We just recently received a $150,000 grant from the Governor's Highway Safety Office to focus on continuing selective, targeted enforcement throughout the city to reduce crashes, injuries, and fatalities. Ms. McGannon alluded to that when she was talking about some of that overtime work before. So I say all that to say this, with the direction and support of the mayor and council, the primary goal of this program from its beginning has been and continues to be the safety of motorists. Ladies and gentlemen, this system is working. It's reducing crashes, it's reducing personal injuries, it's reducing property damage, and it's freeing up police officers to concentrate on more labor-intensive law enforcement and public safety duties. It's working within the original guidelines that were established by the mayor and council. We do not enforce right turns on red, with the exception of those two that we mentioned earlier, at Broad and Northfield and Old Fort Parkway and Thompson Lane. I will tell you that as the Tennessee General Assembly debated these issues and looked at standardizing red light legislation for the state of Tennessee, one of the things that they did was they looked at the city of Murfreesboro, and they said, "Murfreesboro's design was one which was reasonable in its approach to enforcement and successful in achieving its intended purpose." They began to call, some of them did, call it the Murfreesboro Model. We had people that came here to look at it. Officer Schubert still has people that come here and look at it. It was built around safety, not revenue. None of that would have been possible had it not been for you all, city management, this great team of people that worked to help assemble all of that and still manage it. Dana Richardson's still here tonight, if you have questions for him, Ron Balachandran is, Vicky Ordonez is. They're here because they're invested in this program and the safety of our city. Last week, we saw a horrific headline on Franklin Road Baptist Church. Didn't have anything to do with the signal, but traffic fatalities are a critical part of traffic movements and traffic operation. One is too many, one accident with injury is too many. So anything we can do that helps to reduce those, I think is worth our effort and our strong continued commitment to it. I want to thank all of you for supporting it to this point. I will say this for Senator Tracy, who was, and I think is still, the chairman of Senate Transportation. He was a tremendous supporter of that process and of the program in Murfreesboro as it went through that, and I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate him for that support. My recommendation is that you approve this request to extend the contract with ATS. And as we said, I know it's late, but I know your phones should have been ringing, there's been a lot of media attention to this, there's been some misinformation that's been spread. And I wanted to take this opportunity to clear up some of that and give you factual information regarding some of those things, and we have an abundance of staff that stands ready to answer questions that you have.
Chief, thank you for the information, and no matter how late it is, it's what our job is, so we don't mind staying here as long as we've got business to do. So, council members, you've heard Chief Chrisman's information, do y'all have any questions?
I have a couple, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Chrisman. Now, we check the company that we're using to make sure that we're being charged correctly, the charges.
Yes, ma'am, it's, Mr. Crumley and I discussed that earlier this afternoon. Mr. Crumley, you may want to respond to that.
And I'll rely on Melissa, but they're audited with our financials, no different than any other expense or revenue that the city takes.
I'll add, Vicky Ordonez checks those bills and checks them through the payments and the citations before we pay the bill.
Okay. And after being with them four years, have we checked to see if we are eligible for any discounts through their company?
Well, it's interesting, David Mast and I had that conversation earlier this week. I think when we get to the point that we are ready to renegotiate the contract, which would be next year, we'll have to look at the equipment that they've provided us, and how much of any debt has been retired on that initial capital investment. That certainly would affect any future negotiated contracts with the amount of the split of any fines that are received. But the other thing that that may involve, when we come back to this time next year to look at it again, we may very well want to consider adding additional intersections. We've grown, we've got other intersections that we know are dangerous, and it could benefit from adding this technology. So I think, short answer, Ms. Hels Harris, is when we renegotiate the contract, we'll renegotiate the fine distribution and make determinations then at the direction of council as to whether or not you want to add any more intersections, and if so, what that capital expense might do is affecting that cost.
And the money that we send to them is only money for the, not the actual citations, but only the ones that have been paid, right? The unpaid citations, the money's not sent, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And if I get a ticket and you get a ticket, I pay my ticket.
I pay my ticket.
Okay. Ms. Georgia doesn't pay her ticket.
I'm sorry?
Okay, nothing. Ms. Georgia doesn't pay her ticket, so therefore, she will, it will not go against her credit, but it will, she will be turned over to a collection agency.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And in the legal information that Ms. McGannon provided to all of you, there are some other options that are available for collections, and I don't know that Ms. McGannon wants to address that necessarily, but if you have questions, I know she'd be glad to answer them.
And when we first started the program, I know we were having big problems on the intersection of Mercury and Rutherford with that equipment, and the company spent about $2.4 million fixing that particular camera in that intersection, right?
That was for the rework, they put new cameras at all the intersections. They put new detection devices in the laneage leading up to all the intersections, and basically just kind of overhauled the system that was in place prior to them acquiring the contract.
Okay, and we have six intersections with these cameras, and if we pulled out two police officers per intersection, which is about, it's 12 officers, one to actually shoot the camera and the other to actually chase the people down, to stop them, if my figures are correct, and I just went on looking at our budget and what we pay police officers that do, or used to do that, we are saving, we would be paying about $1.8 million to 12 officers, plus the liability of them getting hurt as we see them all over the United States, and even in Tennessee, how the officers are getting injured, given tickets.
I think that's a fair statement, and I'll just add that that $1.8 million does include the capital expense of providing cars for all those.
I know it's pretty hard to make the call, you know, I'm listening to your statistics, I'm listening to our citizens, and listening to myself, and I know the purpose of the cameras are to save lives, and according to your statistics, we're about 52% decrease in crashes, and it's all about saving lives. If we save one life, I guess the cameras work, but I don't know.
It probably paid for itself, if you do. And the thing that I will clarify, that 52% reduction is at all signalized intersections.
Right.
That's remarkable to me.
I think it's important that we get this out on the table. I mean, Eddie brought this out a couple of weeks ago, and really, you know, asked a pretty specific question, I don't want to ask it for you, but I mean, I was curious to know the answer to, so, you know, the question of is it enforceable, and is it fair the way that it's enforceable? I mean, can we, can you elaborate on that a little bit? Maybe that's you, Susan, I mean, is it enforceable? Do people have to pay it, or don't they have to pay it?
Okay. It is clear, as my opinion said, and as the chief has referenced to it, you know, that we have the power to enforce the law that we've adopted in the way that we are enforcing the law. So it's a violation of the law that you can be subject to a fine. You have a legal obligation to pay your debt. It is, it is a, you know, personal debt to the owner of the vehicle, or, and they have a legal duty to pay. It's not optional, it's a legal obligation. It's not preference, it's a duty. What, we have the ability, and we amended the contract to provide, that we wanted to have collection services be used to try and increase compliance with that legal debt. What we have not done, and what the General Assembly has said you cannot do, is report it to a credit agency. Now, a credit agency is not going to collect it, it would just be an additional deterrent. We have the ability to take one or more of these unpaid debts and bring a lawsuit to seek to collect the debt. And if we bring a lawsuit to collect the debt, there are some costs, but you have the ability to get a judgment, to garnish somebody's assets to collect the judgment, so you can collect it the way you can any other debt. It's simply, you know, at what point is voluntary compliance sufficiently high, and the cost of collection- the cost of collection, that it, you know, you rely on voluntary compliance as opposed to voluntary in the sense of you don't require a lawsuit to collect? Or do we engage counsel or use our own counsel to sue for the collection of the debt? But it is the same ability to sue for collection of the debt as if you damaged somebody's property, you had an unpaid utility bill, you know, it is a debt, it is a legally valid debt. The question is, what method do we use to try and increase voluntary compliance? You know, it's a public record, we can make known who is not paying their debts and see if that increases voluntary compliance. We can try and compel compliance by, you know, bringing legal actions and just, you know, so we have choices. Thus far, the city has not seen it necessary or advisable financially to bring lawsuits. We did choose to amend the contract with ATS to engage the, you know, law firm to serve as a, as a collection agency. So, we took that step because we wanted to improve the amounts that we got. So, we have choices, but that is how we get the debt paid, not is it a debt.
And I would just note, from some of the data that was provided to you, you have just south of $5 million that's been paid in fines by people that recognized that they'd made a violation or that they'd committed a violation, paid that fine. You have $2.5 million that's outstanding. So, certainly, most people, I think, are doing the right thing and paying that fee when they get that citation, and there are other options that are available should we choose to exercise then.
If you want to, you know, if there are any recommendations the staff would have for that, I mean, I don't know in the future or what, I mean, we don't have to necessarily decide that tonight. I was really curious about the enforceability. I mean, while I'm asking, there was, you know, really one other idea that was brought up that I wanted to ask about, or really two things, I guess. You know, one was the yellow light timing, somebody brought up to me, which I think is, you know, certainly valid. It wouldn't be, you know, cool with me if, if, you know, whatever, there was a one-second interval on every, on the other 140 red lights, and there was a, you know, quarter of a second yellow light interval, that certainly wouldn't be the right thing to be doing, right? So, I do want to know, I mean, are we, there is a code, apparently, some sort of uniform, you know, are we absolutely good on that?
Mr. Balachandran, would you step up, please, and help answer that? He may have it in his hand right there, it looks like. We had a lot of discussion about.
I don't want the whole code. I just want the answer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, all our yellow times are calculated. I don't want to go into detail about the calculation, but there are four parameters that are used for each intersection, not just the red light locations, but all 139 intersections in the city of Murfreesboro. The four parameters that we use to calculate the yellow clearance times are the approaching speed of the vehicle, the second is the grade of the intersection, the third is a perception-reaction time, and the fourth element is the deceleration rate. So, using the formula, we calculate each individual specifically to each intersection, each approach is calculated based on those, and we use the ITE standard, Institute of Transportation Engineers have developed the formulas and the standards for it, which is in conformance with the manual on uniform traffic control devices. I brought this book just to show you, there are many things in here, and we are in conformance of this book, which the city has adopted as the manual to use for guidance for signal timing.
And all six of those are absolutely in conformance?
Not only the six are in conformance, all 139 are in conformance with this manual and the guidance.
All right. The only other thing, thanks. Anybody got anything for Ron?
Ron, while you're up there, in your expertise and your expert opinion, has a camera ever caused an accident at an intersection?
I don't have that information to really.
Because that's not an engineer's opinion, so you really don't have an opinion on that?
Yes.
Nor will any other engineer give me an opinion on that, probably. Is that correct?
Well, another engineer may be able to give you one, but if I have the, if I'm privy to the crash, and all the information related to the crash, an engineer or anybody would be able to make a determination if a red light caused.
But the camera would not have caused it. I mean, there's no scenario that the camera would have caused an accident at an intersection.
There are many elements that affect an intersection and a crash, and really, it's hard for someone to say whether a camera did it or.
Well, the camera's over here on the side of the road. The camera didn't cause the accident, is my point. The camera's not involved in the accident. If there's an accident, the camera did not cause the accident. We're in agreement, right?
Yes.
Nor can the camera prevent an accident.
Yes, that's a, that's a.
Because the camera's just a thing that records the event. It's not something that causes or prevents an accident. That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
Does you have another question, Mr. Olans?
The only thing I was going to say, you know, I came in here with a few questions, you know, tonight, trying to keep an open mind of this, and reading, I've been looking and talking to people, and, you know, the main question that I had that, from the very get-go, is are we safer? And, you know, I talked to a couple of guys who came up and made points last week, and, you know, one of the guys brought up a nice, I mean, put together a presentation for us, which was great, you know, and we have stuff to read through, and, you know, one sentence, he said that we're not safer, and the next sentence it said, side impact crashes are down 32 and 42%. And I just kind of said, you know, I can't see where that screams not safer. To me, it kind of screams that we're safer, and so I just can't hardly get past that. I just feel like we're safer. I had a question, is it legal? It sounds like there's no question about that. Then the question of is it enforceable? Yeah, looks like it's enforceable. And now, with the yellow light, I just want to make sure it's being done fairly, you know, and it sounds like it's being done fairly with yellow light timing, and we have a human decision-maker that's looking at every one of them, so, you know, the only, the last thing that I'll add to it was that I just had here that, you know, other, please keep coming up with other ideas, you know, other thoughts, you know, whether, I got an email about all red moments, I can't, the terminology isn't right, but where the whole, you know, all four of the lights are red all the way around for maybe a half a second longer or whatever.
We do that, but I'll let Mr. Balachandran speak.
You don't have to tell me about it, I'm just saying, for instance.
It's already there.
Please, good. Check.
I'll put a check behind it, literally. All right. Thanks, Chief.
At the end of the day, ladies and gentlemen, I don't want anybody to get a ticket. You don't want to get one, you don't want to pay one, we don't want to give them. It's a simple process. Red means stop. That's all you got to do.
I've got a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
If I just go through and I look at the data, and I go through and I look from 2007, 2008 to 2014, do you have any other explanation on why that accidents, rear impact, side impact, is there any other explanation, in your opinion, on why those have decreased?
I don't know what it would be, Mayor. People probably talk to you all, just like they talk to me, and when red light cameras come up, people know there are red light cameras in Murfreesboro. They know that there are cameras posted at intersections that may actually not be red light cameras. I think what's happened is people are paying more attention to those signals, and they stop when that light's red, and as a result, we're having less crashes.
Have you, in the time between '08 and 2014, have you increased motor, your police officers, have you increased that at those intersections?
No. I redeployed them to other duties.
And that's what I'm trying to, by reading through all this, trying to get around that '07, '08, we were 1,700, now we're half that. You haven't increased police presence in those intersections, so the other variable would be photo enforcement, because I can't imagine with the traffic that we have and the growth that we've had, that it just all of a sudden has gone down by 55%, 52%.
Now, Mayor, I got to tell you that as we keep adding intersections and our traffic volume keeps going up, we're probably going to get to a point of diminishing returns, which begs another discussion for next year, is, is it time to look at adding some intersections? But that's not a discussion for tonight.
We can carry one thing at a time.
I'm with you.
Mr. Smother.
There's one thing the chief and I agree on, let me borrow your cup a second. Red means stop. There's absolutely no question about that. And we want the drivers on our streets to be as responsible as they can possibly be and observe every red light. There's no question about that. We also want the people who travel our streets to be as safe as we can possibly make them. There's no question about that. We all agree. However, I didn't bring a bunch of experts with me tonight, nor, I'm just one city councilman, and this is just my opinion. There's 890,461 reasons why we shouldn't renew this contract. This is an expensive experiment. It's an experiment that has gone on for six years. We have seen no decrease in the number of citations issued. We have seen a number of accidents reduced. But we are sending $890,000 out of our local economy to a company in Scottsdale, Arizona. Appreciate you guys coming tonight. It matters to them because they want people to run tickets. That's how they make money, monitoring intersections and people running them. Certainly, if you look at the number of tickets that have been issued, we have a lot of people that run lights. They still continue to run lights. But I would like for somebody to explain to me the association between how a camera recording an event has any impact on the event. It doesn't prevent a crash, it doesn't stop a crash. The crash is caused by the people driving the cars. The event is recorded by the camera. We had on the monitor up here, we watched, and I think you gave an excellent presentation of cars running red lights. We know that happens, we see it probably almost on a daily basis if we drive very much. Why did one single person in those cars that ran those intersections do it? We don't know if they were drunk, we don't know if they were texting, we don't know if they were under prescription drugs and just out of control. We don't know why they did it. We didn't get them off the street, we sent them a ticket for $25 or $50. That's not the answer to the problem. We need to take an approach, a strategic approach, to try and make an intersection safer. Is the camera a tool? Sure, maybe it's a tool. I'm not going to argue that it may not be a tool. But there's also other tools. We see in Smyrna, they use strobe lights on intersections. That's to get the attention of the driver, because a person who's texting might notice this flashing thing that they don't notice on the intersection.
If he's texting and driving, he's violating the law, so.
Right, right. So is the person who's drinking and driving, and so is the person who's under the intoxic, or under influence drugs. All these people have other violations, and I would say if they make it through the intersection without hitting anybody, running the red lights, probably the least of them. No one has attributed the cause of any crash to a red light enforcement system. Do we really believe that no one has slammed on their brakes because of that camera being at that intersection and gotten rear-ended at those intersections?
And if they did, and they hit the car in front of them, Mr. Smother, and they were probably following too closely.
They were driving too fast, following too closely.
That's the number one reason for rear-end crashes in state Tennessee.
Another violation. Had nothing to do with running a red light, but there was another violation taking place. Total crashes at signalized intersections. Last year, we had 732, or two years ago, we had 732. This most previous year, we had 797, an increase of 8.87%.
Which is still 50% less than it was six years ago.
Right. So, we may have already reached that point of diminishing return. Side angle impact crashes, same comparison. '12, '13, we had 289 side impact crashes. '13, '14, we had 398 crashes, an increase of 37.71%, according to your data here, increase in the number of crashes at those intersections. We may have reached the point of diminishing return on that particular tool. I think strobe lights on the intersection would be an improvement. I think that would get the attention of some of those drivers.
And I'd be glad to have Mr. Balachandran speak to that, if you'd like.
Sure.
I would also like rumble strips on the intersections as an experimental project. And I've been to other states where they've had them. Certainly, it was an excellent tool for them because it's a thing that alerts you, if you're unfamiliar with the area, that I'm approaching an intersection. So, for that tourist who's in town, who didn't run the light because they were intoxicated or didn't run it because they were texting, they just didn't know there was an intersection there. So, it's a tool that might could be used to help develop tourists, or help educate tourists as to where our intersections are. Citations issued, we haven't seen any decrease in citations issued, so we still have the same number of people. They're just somehow magically getting through the intersections more safely, whether it's because of, we've got drivers who are not following as many people through the intersection, or trailering, I guess it might be a term that you would use where they just tailgate through the person, follow the person through the intersection on the turn signal. We all hate that when it happens because our light has turned green and somebody's blocking the intersection. We all experience it, but we all understand that they've broken the law, but it doesn't give us the right to go ram them in the side just because they took advantage of the situation and pushed theirself in line. American Traffic Solutions began developing or monitoring, managing our collections. This data shows that the total paid since January 4 of 2013 was 421,000. The total unpaid was 2,541,000. So, apparently, about four out of five people that go to collections still aren't paying the tickets. When we talk about going to collections, since I've been on the council, I've asked several times, because I had had people ask me, Eddie, why do you keep telling us that it can't go against our credit rating? And I said, because the state legislature passed a bill that said it couldn't. They said, I'm getting information that says they still can do it. I said, no, it's been taken care of, it's been removed. We found out 10 days ago that the information I've been giving them and you've been giving me was incorrect.
On the second and third notice.
On the second and third notices.
Through no fault of ours.
Through no fault of ours, through whose fault?
That was an ATS error.
It was an ATS error. And why did ATS want them to? And why did ATS want them to pay the tickets? Because they made more money when they paid the tickets, and therefore it was okay. Now, was it just a clerical error or a mistake on their part? We aren't the only city in Tennessee that has traffic light cameras. We asked them to take care of the problem, but they didn't do it. They continue to write tickets and use that as a leverage, implying to people that you've got to pay this ticket because it's going to go on your credit rating if you don't. When is the red light running happening? That's one of the questions they ask in their booklet. They never, they tell us it's happening between 12:00 and 4:00 p.m., so basically, if we were to want to focus on intersections, we've got the information here that tells us when our primary time to watch the intersections. We don't have to go out and watch them for entire shifts. Maybe if there's a repeat offender and we know somebody's going through an intersection on a regular basis and running a light, it'd be advisable to go out there. But from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. is primarily the time that most lights are running. Friday is the day of the week that most of the lights are running. We know that. The information's here. So it's not like we have to go out and assign officers to every single intersection, but it would be nice if it could move around. And you even said a while ago that you'd like to have it on different intersections, but the current red light system that we're about to approve, it doesn't move around. It just stays on those same ones where everybody knows where they're at. I think, I'll go back to one comment that has been made. It says the 92 percent of all violators who receive and pay the ticket do not get another violation. I think the key word in that might be "receive and pay" because we never seem to get information telling us about the people who don't pay, and we haven't gone after one single person who hasn't paid half of Ms. McGannon.
We have to file a lawsuit against them, no sir.
I guess my point is, I think we all know how the vote's going to go tonight. I appreciate you bringing all your experts in to tell us about how they feel about traffic light cameras, and I understand your passion for it because I think you are genuine in your concern and your safety for your officers, and I get that. But I do think there's other tools that we can use to make our intersections safer. You mentioned Scott Broden earlier. I'll mention him as well. I appreciate him and what the rest of the media has done to bring attention to our intersections in Murfreesboro, because I think that awareness alone improves the safety of our intersections. So I appreciate what they've done. I'll tell you, I didn't reach out to any of them. They all reached out to me. And every one of them that I've talked to has had the same question. What is your biggest concern? And my biggest concern is the safety of the drivers in the city of Murfreesboro. And are we doing it in the most efficient way? Are we spending our money prudently? When we do get money, are we reinvesting that money into making those intersections safer? Or putting the money in the general fund? We're not doing a focused anything on those intersections other than saying, "Well, we've got our cameras there." So certainly, I appreciate your time and your presentation tonight, and I'll be voting against the approval of the contract of the traffic light signals. Thank you.
I'll be glad to have Mr. Ballachonan or Mr. Richardson speak to the rumble strip or the strobe light, Mr. Smother, if you'd like.
That's okay. It's getting late.
Is it possible for me to make a quick comment?
Would you like to hear from Mr. Smother?
I think we're okay. Thank you. I would like to say one thing that I have talked to Mr. Lyons about, and, you know, we talk about revenue and expenses and assets and liabilities, but I would like, and maybe this is something the city council will consider, Mr. Smotherman is right, those revenues do go into the general fund, and that goes into one big pot that's distributed into different, the majority of that, I would argue, goes back to the police department. But I would like to see in us research before our next agenda or our next budget hearing that the, whatever the revenue that the city does get, it is directed entirely back into the police department and to, whether that's motorcycle police officers, that's directed patrol. We talk about a tool bucket. Here's your toolbox, and that's what that's for. And so there can be no, in my opinion, question that we're putting that back in the general fund, that it's going back into traffic enforcement and police enforcement in making our intersections and our directed patrol safer. So just to comment, Mr. Crumley, if you could relay that to Mr. Lyons.
Fully noted.
And one other point that I left out and I wanted to make was about 10 days ago, we had an election in this country, and there was either four or five cities, but I know at least four of those cities voted on red light cameras, and they allowed the public to decide whether or not they wanted red light cameras. In all four cities that I'm referencing, they voted 70 to 80 percent, they did not want red light cameras. At the same time, when we had the open mic the other night, I kind of roughly kept notes, and eight out of 10 people who spoke were opposed to red light cameras. I just think that there's a message coming from the public side as well as from the law enforcement side as to the future of red light cameras. And Senator Tracy reached out to me this past week, and he said, Eddie, he said, "You're right." He said, "You should be concerned about that much revenue within your community." And I wouldn't be surprised if the state legislature don't soon take action on red light cameras. I'm done.
I can't tell if it makes you feel any better. I was on WGNS this morning, or Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, and I think we had eight callers on red light cameras, and there was one person who called against. So, you know, I think it just depends on who you're talking to. All right.
Mayor, move for approval of the recommendation of the police chief.
Let me make a comment. I really appreciate all of Eddie's passion and Councilman, Councilman Smotherman's passion on this issue, because it's been a good public education for the public, both sides, both sides, regardless of how my coworkers vote. And where ETFs was he because this is what you're working against. This is what you're working against. When you go into negotiations, be aware of that, be aware of our concerns, be aware of the public's concerns, and if you want to keep the business, you better get your heart right. So this is getting late. I don't want to say anymore. I second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
No.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to board and commission appointments. We have some recommendation for reappointments to the Gateway Commission.
I move that we accept the mayor's recommendations.
Miss Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, sorry. Go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
I have got two recommendations that we'll do actually for our next meeting, and it's for Marie Trot for the Senior Center Commission and for Brian Patterson to go to the Cable TV Commission. Okay, Ms. Wright, dear permits.
Yes, Mayor, we have three tonight. One of these has actually been presented before, but because the length of time before the business started being close to being open, a year has passed since this was first submitted, so we thought we would redo the background checks and resubmit it. This is for a restaurant bar at 1206 Robert Rose Drive, and I believe they're nearing their final inspection, so this one still is recommended for approval or reapproval. We also have a restaurant to be opened at 2458 O'Quinn Parkway, which is an ownership change and a name change, and we recommend it for approval when it finishes its codes inspections. And there's a convenience store, new location at 2736 Florence Road. This one as well, once it, all the building codes inspections are complete, we recommend for approval.
Move for approval. Second. All right, motion in a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We have the statements in front of you. I think Mr. Smotherman was going to make a motion to approve those.
Paid bills. Second.
I was going to do that, you're right. I move with paid bills.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
And see, Mr. Ives quickly anchoring up to get to the podium, so I assume we must have other business from staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I have one short item of other business tonight. CUD has asked for a water line easement running along the west side and then down, kind of across the middle, and then down the east side or across the, down in the middle, to have the Coleman Farm. Coleman Farm, of course, was acquired by Water and Sewer to, as a place to disperse reuse water. It has taken the engineers a little longer to agree on the route for this because there were some potential conflicts with the city's water line and the city reuse water line. And I'm bringing it as other business because CUD is anxious to get started on the construction. So Water and Sewer Board and Planning Commission has recommended this, and I ask for your approval and authorize the mayor to sign this and let CUD get to work.
Mr. Ives, this isn't going to have any future impact whatsoever on what future plans for the Coleman Farm might be, whether it be used for any other facilities or any other parks or anything like that.
It certainly shouldn't because it's right along the edge of the existing roads. You can see it on the partly dark blue and partly kind of a gold color across the bottom. All of this is along existing roads. I meant to say that as, you know, there is a drawing there showing where it's going to go. So it's along the existing road. It doesn't cut out through the middle of the field, won't impact any water dispersal really or any other thing that the city might want to do on that property.
Any impact to any of the property owners out there across the street?
No. No, this is just underground water line. And this is where it'll run on the city's property. It'll extend on down to the south. They'll, they'd get other easements for other people for that, but this is just the part that's on the Coleman Farm.
This line's already in place going down Central Valley Road, not Central Valley Road, but Swamp Road, Leanna Swamp Road, and it's already in place. I mean, they've been out there with backhoes and tractors and everything, working along the roadside.
I think there's other construction going on. I don't believe that that's for this, for the CUD water line. I think there's some other construction out there.
Mayor, I think the Planning Commission looked at this and determined that it was in good order and it would not be, have any detrimental effect on the city, so with that, I move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, call the roll, please.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Okay, and we have off the consent agenda, consider recommendations of the city manager with regards to Christmas grocery gift cards.
One quick thing, Mayor. It was brought to my attention from some employees that their Christmas card, one employee said he went to use his Christmas card in July and found out it had expired in April. So I would like to ask the council if we will give them a year to use the card, because three months to use the card is not sufficient if we're giving a Christmas gift. He said he went to get his little daughter some food for her birthday party in July and found out the card expired in April, so that we just gave him three months on the card. And I asked two other employees, and they said they experienced the same thing.
Mr. Crumley asked me about that before the meeting. I was not part of the bid opening, but I did call one of my staff members who was, and her recollection was that this bid is good for, the card would be good for a year.
Great. So they can, they now have a year.
I haven't seen that, but my understanding is that's how the bid, the bid that this company turned in said the card would be good for a year.
Yeah, a couple of employees told me that they were not able to use the card after three years. I mean, three months. So we need to give them the opportunity to use it for a year.
Can we get a motion to approve, and what I would recommend is maybe putting that as a condition of the motion.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that with the Christmas card, that the employees have 12 months to use it.
Second.
Yearly.
I think actually, it would be, we said move to approve the recommended load bidder, provided that they do in fact honor the card for a 12-month period.
Move to approve the load bidder, provided they agree to the 12-year.
12 months.
12 months. I don't know where I'm getting years from tonight. 12-month usage.
Madeline, may I amend that to a minimum of a 12-month usage, because many cars, once you've got them, they're good for that point on until you use the money. I mean, I don't, I don't think an expiration date's really a very common practice on gift cards.
Mr. Smotherman, we've had this issue with the cards before, and the other proposer, I know in another year, not this bid, had indicated it was good for a year. And so I know that this is, it may be limited to grocery stores, but I know the question of a year is one that has come up before, and that was the most we were able to get. I'm not familiar with this particular one, but I know the issue had surfaced before, so I don't know that either of the proposers would comply with longer than a year. That may be something that we look to next year, whether we do a grocery card or do something else that might not have an expiration term that staff can look at, but for this year, I think highly likely that both vendors would have a year limit.
Well, if either one of them came forward and said, "I'll give you two years now," would that make it more attractive?
He's just saying minimum.
I'm just saying minimum. I'm not saying they have to. I'm just saying set the one year.
A minimum of one year. So if the minimum, yeah, I think that.
So that if they want to give us more, we can take it.
I'm sorry.
Otherwise, you're tying your hands to one year.
Right, I understand.
I amend my motion to a minimum of one year.
Second. Have a second?
Second.
Good idea. Ms. Wright, call the roll. We have two seconds.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business? All right. Good discussion tonight. Thanks, staff, for being here. Good meeting. Call for adjournment.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business? All right. Good discussion tonight. Thanks, staff, for being here. Good meeting. Call for adjournment.